Meeting to order. I'll take a few moments to discuss meeting logistics. Anyone joining remotely, we would ask that you change your video display to indicate your first and last name, so we know who we're talking to. When you, anyone who speaks, again, we ask you to state your name and where you live. We ask you to keep your comments or questions under three minutes. If you're speaking about a specific agenda item, please keep your comments germane to that item. If you wish to speak, you must be called on by the mayor. And once you're called on, you may ask a question or make a comment, but not engage in back and forth conversation. And anyone who speaks out of turn, discusses non-german topics or goes on too long will be reminded of the necessity to conform your conduct to our rules. The first item is to approve the agenda. I know there are a couple of changes to the consent agenda, which we will take up when we get to it. Other than that, unless I hear otherwise, we'll assume the agenda is approved. Okay. Next up, we have an opportunity for general business and appearances. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to address the council on any topic that is not on tonight's agenda. Comments are limited to five minutes and I'll declare the floor open for public comment. Is there anyone in the room? John Snell. If you're here to talk about Barry Street or East East State Street. It's not on tonight's agenda. Okay. Come on up. Okay, we're all, we're done. Okay.
John Snell, I live on First Avenue. And I'm not, I'm here to talk about East State Street again. And I realize it's not on the agenda, but I really felt like while it was still in people's minds, I'd like to bring up the issue of the new sidewalk. Because I felt like I wasn't at the last meeting, but I listened to the video. Oh, I don't know how you do it. And there was a lot of confusion, I felt like. So I'm hoping I can straighten some of that out with this diagram and show you on the bottom right corner where the existing crosswalk is. And where that long line down to Hubbard Street is where the proposed new sidewalk is to go on the south side of East State Street. I see several problems. One is I don't think that a new sidewalk is necessary. I don't know that DPW has ever counted people walking up and down the existing sidewalk or using the existing crosswalk. But I suspect that it's not, it's not a huge number of people. And if we're going to invest point seven million dollars in a new sidewalk, I think it would behoove us to at least know how many people are using the existing one. I think the other big problem with a new sidewalk is it will require building a retaining wall all along what is already a very steep slope there. And there's a guardrail, the whole length of that, that's there for a reason. Because if a car went off there, they'd end up in somebody's back door, not just backyard, but back door. So I'm not sure how the new, how with a, with a new sidewalk can even fit a guardrail in there. But the, really, the, my biggest concern, and I walk this every day, is the intersection of Hubbard and East State Street, which is utilized by kids every morning and every evening, coming and going to school. And right now, it is a dangerous intersection in my estimation. I'm not a traffic safety engineer, but that's my experience. And it's dangerous in part because cars parked up close to the intersection. There's no longer a crossing guard. Cars are speeding by the time they get there. And to add to that, two new crosswalks on the south side and the east side would just be deadly. Unless we had a stoplight there. And I don't think that'll happen. I oftentimes walk that area, as I said, and I see cars going up that last bit of Hubbard Street against the arrow. And you know, it's unconscionable that they do it now, but if there are a crosswalk there, there's no way you can go up there and put your brakes on and then take off again. Sightlines are horrible. It just doesn't work. So I am asking you to think about this. I would be willing to meet with any of you, all of you individually, if you need to, at a time of your convenience, and walk this area. It'll take fifteen, twenty minutes. And we, I can really show you my concerns there. And then I'd ask if you see my points for us to go back to DPW and say, forget it. I think we left it that they're gonna come back with a proposal or a price, but even that was not clear to me. But I think it would be nuts to go ahead with design of something like this.
Thanks, John. Just to clarify a couple of things, the design is approved, but when they go out to contract, they'll have, they'll come to us to approve the contract too. We the crossing guard situation, people have come to us with concerns about the crossing guards at a couple of intersections. And the problem is that's in the hands of the school district, and they just haven't been able to hire for those positions.
Yep.
And there's one other thing that I can't remember, but, but thanks for coming.
Yeah. Just one last point that we have in the past, I've called the police department and they've been willing to put a, in the middle of the road sign there. It doesn't work in the winter because of snow plowing. But if the existing crosswalk is a problem, another possible solution would be to put a solar powered light there that is user initiated.
Oh, I know what the other No. It's gone again. I'll, I'll talk to you when I remember. Thanks, John.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else in the room would like to address the council? Steve.
Yeah, Steve Whitaker. I noticed, I brought up the issue of the illegal dumping behind the Nettie property, city center, out by the food pantry. And city miss manager responded in his weekly, there's no, no issue there. That's why there's no records. I did a public records request to the building health officer. There are no records. So week after week went by, but it's clear from my experience in the construction world and talking to officials, state officials, that you can't dump building materials, sheet rock dust, there's pulverized epoxy from the degrading coatings that they use in that garage. That garage is not, we've got a failure of our inspection and a failure of our health enforcement citywide. There's hazards. Look at the handicap ramp going into the front of city center. Corroded and collapsed concrete with rebar sticking up. Rebar doesn't impale you any less if it's painted fluorescent orange, you know? But it's sticking up right there in the, in the handicap ramp into the building. Look at Jacob's doorsteps and buildings falling apart onto, you know, into the river or onto sidewalks. We need, this needs attention by the council to ramp up our enforcement of hazards created by failing maintenance and it's a whole nother league when you, your health inspector convinces the city miss manager that there is no problem there. That people are breathing, waiting out there for hours or more to get food from the food pantry, breathing this pulverized sheet rock dust and, and plastic. That's not, not at all helping. The Complete Streets Committee. When I acquired at their last meeting, they didn't feel heard or included in the city plan and John Snell's comments really should be referred and carried to that committee first. I don't think the capacity will ever exist on the council to be doing the kind of planning for walkability and bikeability and, and safety that you've created that committee to do. I'll stop there for now.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room would like to be heard? And I'm looking at our participant, our remote participants. I'm not seeing anybody. So we can move to the consent agenda. We've had a request to pull items C and D from the consent agenda, so we'll take those off for more discussion. And with that is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I think the three on the subcommittee ought to approve those amendments. Because the rest of us weren't there.
Okay.
Just to
Thank you. All right. Item C, sewer cleaning flood. If you want it.
So I asked to have these two pulled off the consent agenda. One is, so C is regarding sewer cleaning, sorry, my glasses back on. Sewer cleaning for the flood and then D is the elevator repairs. And I have nothing against the projects. I think they're very important and we should move ahead. I just want to make sure you know, as we are in a world of unknowns with the government that we have, I just want to make sure that we have a you know, a thoughtful process in case we don't get reimbursed by FEMA. You know, I'm living in the world right now in, in an organization where we are federally funded. We did have a contract signed for five years of a cooperative agreement. And the federal government said, we are not going to, you know, acknowledge that and we're not going to pay you because we don't believe in that anymore. And so I just want to make sure as a city, we're thinking about, you know, the, the news and, you know, our president not believing in FEMA and wanting it to go back to the states and being it funded through the states, which impacts our local budgets. And so I just wanted to have a conversation tonight, just to think through that. It is, you know, a pretty significant amount of money. And I just wanted, you know, us to be aware and the public to be aware that this is a possibility. That's all. It's just a risk, but
Bill, do you have anything?
Or Kelly? I mean, it sounded like the idea was to, I, I don't, I don't, I didn't hear. Do you have more questions? Or I think it was just, let's be aware that we're doing this at some risk. I think I, we did provide information about the level of risk.
Yeah, and I should mention for the public that I got an email from a resident this afternoon raising a question about the elevator in City Hall and saying, well, he, he's unable to attend Lost Nation or other events because they're upstairs and he needs to use the elevator. And asking what the city is doing to repair the elevator and my response, and I think this is, you know, I'm happy to say this in public is that whatever ever comes from FEMA or not, we're gonna need that elevator. So I don't think we have any choice but to go forward and I don't see any reason to delay any further.
It's a good reminder that that's why we're here tonight, is because we don't have an elevator at City Hall.
Ben, oh, sorry, Kelly first and then Ben.
So I didn't make the like exact calculation, but it will be over almost two two hundred fifty thousand expense. So if we cannot get any funding from FEMA for both projects, are we using the reserves? Or where is the money coming from to pay these two projects? Thank you.
Oh, good. Hi, Sarah.
Sarah Lufroy, Finance Director. So obviously, I can't say with a hundred percent certainty that we will get FEMA money for these things. At this time, there has been no indication that funding would be withdrawn from these events that have already happened. For both July events, twenty-three and twenty-four, the city lodged a significant damage inventory list that outlined each piece of damage. For the twenty-three event, I have gotten a significant amount of those projects obligated and I am still actively working on those projects. And so some of this work we need to do. Just, just, we need to do it, right? We need the elevator, we need to do the sewer inspection and cleaning because there are issues there. With the sewer inspection, we have until July ninth to complete that and receive FEMA funding, which is why that one is so prudent and time sensitive. Because once you guys give the green light, we get that work done between now and then, and I request reimbursement immediately as a completed work project. And so thus far, aside from the difficult hoops to jump, I have not had FEMA deny me anything. I have gotten about one point three million in the door to date related to FEMA projects. And I did reach out to Guide House, who is the state's rep who's working with us and they have heard nothing about funding pulled from these disasters. And so I weekly am trying to submit projects to get funds obligated to get as much money back in the door as possible. But we do have significant costs upcoming that have timelines associated with them for project extensions as well as putting the building back together. So some of those things we just will need to do and be thoughtful about what that looks like. And the way FEMA works is that they are obligated at this time to put things back in kind to codes and standards. So in theory, they are obligated to put the elevator back to codes and standards, and we have not done that yet. So I do feel confidently that that's a cost we would get recouped for. If we were to do something that was more mitigation related, I would want to be cautious without funds already obligated, but this is a basic, put it back to codes and standards today. So I feel good about that, if that is helpful at all.
Thanks, Sarah. That's very helpful for members who, of the public who might not know what you're talking about. Restoring it to codes and standards means not only bringing it back to where it was, but also to any of the present codes, even if they were not requirements at the, or at time.
That's correct, including like our own elevate, that, that's a big part of elevating. And if we're requiring everybody else to do it, and it's a codes and standards that applies to us as well. So that would be a part of this, as well as ADA accessibility and different pieces like that.
Thanks, Sarah. There's, is there a motion to approve items C and D? Okay.
I raised this to your attention before. I asked the street supervisor on the Friday that I notified you that no one, there was nobody on staff to clean up the puke out of the alley. That was the same weekend that we had some heavy rain. And we didn't have a process or a plan or an emergency trigger to get the storm drains cleaned off from the, the leafage. That's why School Street and Loomis Street were, intersections were flooded with nearly a foot of water. And I think that that we need to have something formalized that when you know storm is coming, regardless of whether everybody's got Friday off, we're gonna get, make sure our drains are clear so that we don't create other hazards. It's, it's not rocket science.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve items C and D of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. Moving up to item six, Byphone Farm Way. So I'll start quickly here.
I just, I, yeah, just quickly, I want to say I'm, I work for the Preservation Trust of Vermont, which is a party of this, so I'm gonna recuse myself from the discussion and the vote.
Thank you.
So yeah, I'll just start briefly, and I know there are two people from Preservation Trust that are on the call that I think can explain this in more detail. I think you provided a lot of packet, information in your packet, and the council was briefed on this in December of twenty-three, when you basically gave us approval at that time to move ahead in the direction that we're going. Basically through a lot of great work of our partners, particularly Preservation Trust of Vermont. We're now at a place where closing documents can be signed. So basically, the request here is for you to get, you know, is we're recommending that you authorize a city manager to, to execute all the documents to complete the deal. And we have staff from PTV here to explain the project to the extent that you want, that you have any questions about it. Basically, this will come, the, the, the old house that's in disrepair will be taken down. That property will be converted to floodway. It will become city property with certain historic preservation restrictions. And we can't build anything because it's floodway and floodplain. But it could be used for, there are things that it can be used for in those conditions, like a dog park. And I'm not saying that's gonna be a dog park, but that's an example of something that could be used there legally. And so that's, that's where we're at. And again, I, you know, Ben with his other hat on did a huge amount of work on this and we really appreciate it.
Thanks, Phil. Nicole or Meg, do you have anything to add?
I don't have anything to add. No.
Okay.
I don't have anything to add either. But if you have any questions, we're here for you.
Thank you. Council, any questions? So.
It seems like we're at the end of a, an extremely long, extremely long process with this project. And what, what, what happens after the, I mean, I, I, I think it's, there's a lot of detail here that has been ongoing, and I, I think it's, it's great that it's, it's being wrapped up. The, once the house is disassembled, then what? Engineering takes place to create a floodplain and is there anything else attached to the project?
I will let one of the PTV people answer that.
So through the Vermont Emergency Management Grant that we have currently, the Flood Resilient Communities Fund, we're working with SLR Group to do the floodplain restoration design. So we're kind of front-loading that part of the work. Once the city has acquired the parcel and when you're ready to take on that work, you can be seeking out grants, and I believe the city has done that to do the implementation part of that, that, that project. So yes, the, the plan is to have that parcel support the flood resiliency along that stretch of river.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve? Sorry. Oh, Paul Carnahan, sorry, I didn't see you.
That's okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm from the Commission on Recovery and Resilience, and I just wanted to briefly say that this has been a longstanding project of ours for the two years that we've been meeting. It's a really high priority in our minds. It will impact localized flooding. It'll help, it'll help resolve localized flooding. We don't want to overpromise what it's going to do. It's not going to remove the inundation of water from our downtown. But it is one of many small projects that need to be done along the watershed. So it's something that Montpelier can do to show that we are working with other towns in the watershed to try to have a positive impact on the, the flood challenges that, that we're having now. So we hope that you can, can support the, the project and, and move us forward.
Thanks, Paul. Is there a motion to approve the proposed action?
I will move to approve it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And Ben will note your abstention or refusal. Great. This is a good step forward. Thank you. All right. We're up to item number seven, city plan changes and review. Mara, Mike.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Mike Miller, Planning Director. So I'm not sure process-wise, if you wanted to have any public input before we go through the slate, if we want to go through the slate and make the slate and then take comments before you vote or take comments along the way, what, what process would you like to take?
I think I'm inclined to have you go through the slate of changes, then see if there are public comments and then questions and discussion from the council. And so go ahead.
Okay, so just for summary of Okay, so just for summary of what I've put together and put in the packet for you. I pretty much tried to compile as much as I could into two things. One, I called the matrix, which is the Excel table with the, the yellow on it. And the other one is, are the comments I made into Sal, Counselor Alfano's email. So I have two sets to go through, and we could just go through them. The way I have flagged and organized them, is there a number of them that you'll see that are just white? Those are ones that we've received either in written testimony or oral testimony or whatever that we have noted, and I think are not policy related and are ones I agree with. We made the testimony from Montpelier Alive or from the Conservation Commission or something like that. And I think these are good changes. I wasn't intending on going through those. I, the ones that are highlighted are the ones that I felt we needed to at least touch on. Even if we don't discuss them, we at least go through and acknowledge that, yes, that was something. And then we can move on from there. And some of the yellow ones have some decisions that I'm kind of leaving, leaving for folks. So if you want, I'll start with the, the list on the matrix, unless people want me to start with.
That sounds good.
Okay. So the first of the yellow ones, and this comes up, there's a couple of these where this came up. There was testimony about deleting in particular rental units, if everyone remembers that one. And I, that's up to, up to counsel if you want to go and remove that particular phrase from the, I believe it's in the housing section. And, oh, and I'm also, if you want, I can read both sides of the columns. But otherwise, I'm just going to quickly summarize and assume everybody has, has an idea. But there was a, in particular rental units, we can strike that or keep it.
Adrian.
I would recommend that we strike rental units and just keep it housing units. I don't know if we need to specify.
I'm seeing.
Well, you know, I just, I'm just want to, if it's all right, I'd like to ask Mike's opinion on that just because, like, yes, I would love to keep it general to around housing. We don't have a housing needs assessment yet that would inform this decision. But if we did, like, I, you know, I suspect we in fact are going to need more rental units. And so I'm just curious, like, from a funding perspective, as we perceive funding or different designations, do you think Mike, that it makes a difference? Because if it doesn't make a difference, let's just strike it.
Yeah, I, I don't think it makes a difference in, in any of the funding or the programs that we're pursuing. I will say, I happened to stumble upon just by accident, a report that was talking pre-COVID, so this is before 2020. But it was talking about the numbers of single family need and the number of rental need or owner occupied in rental. And it was basically two to one. So they were, they were saying that the need for rental is about double the need for owner occupied. So it's not to say we don't need more owner occupied. It's just saying for every owner occupied, we need two more rentals because we're more, more in need of rentals than we are owner occupied. But that's pre-COVID dated numbers. I just, that was.
But for the purposes of pursuing a designation or a grant funding, it doesn't matter?
Doesn't matter.
Then I would agree that we strike it.
Okay, now, decisions aren't going to be made. The city clerk suggested we get down to what we think we agree on and then vote the slate. But, but let's count that as a yes to, to go along with that change for now.
Okay, there was a recommendation to make the hotel a high priority. I think that's an easy yes. Somebody said no.
Everybody speak up if you disagree. Okay.
Numbering council strategies, I actually have this detailed a little bit more in, in Sal's reply. I did make a recommendation in there about how to number them by using a two letter and a one number. So housing would be an HO1, HO2, HO3. That way, if somebody has to reference a strategy, they would have a specific code for it. That's fine.
Seems like a sensible way to go, yeah.
There's a recommendation to use different colors and banners for continue, amend and new. That's also in the strategies. I can certainly do that if you guys want us to. I can work with Evelyn about coming up with a, a uniform system to put that in, in effect.
Adrian.
Set a question about this. So I guess as a broader question around the continued strategies. Trying to think of my question, why are they in the city plan? I don't know. Like a very broad question, but what is, though, when I think of a, a plan, you know, what is the distinction between new visionary, you know, robust strategies versus the work that we're already doing? For me, that part was very confusing. And so next, I just want to know a little bit more about why that is.
Yeah, if I knew exactly where it is, it is talked about somewhere else in one of these. But the quick answer is there are a lot of things that we are doing, and they just take time. And people need to recognize that they're ongoing. And I think the best example of this is in the resilience chapter where we, I think it's been pointed out that like 26 of the 30 are continued. It's like, well, it's actually because we're doing an awful lot. And if you look through each one of them, it's like, yeah, we are doing that, we are doing that, we are doing that, we are doing that. And I think it's helpful to have that in there. If we didn't, a project like Country Club Road wouldn't be in our city plan because it's a project we're continuing. But it is a project that it's just going to take some time for us to realize the value on.
I, I think that like the continued stuff, to me, provides context of, in, in part, context for why we're doing the new stuff. Right? That like, if we just looked at the new stuff in isolation, you don't get the full picture. I do think they should be color coded so that we can differentiate and, and potentially, I don't know if this, or grouped together, but like in some way, we should be able to clearly, more clearly group or differentiate the new versus continued. But I do like having them, I think maybe you had suggested like putting them in an appendix or somebody did, maybe. But I, I like kind of keeping them all together and just having it color coded so that we can see which is new and which is continued. I think it makes a more comprehensive picture.
So.
Yeah, I guess I kind of agree, which is a kind of a change. Because I, I talked about the Celtics not having, playing basketball in their business plan because that's what they do. But you most clearly said that they don't, they need to play basketball, and we don't need to do some of the things we're doing. So it, it does provide context. We could be discontinuing those things, and we're not. But I think they, they should be grouped. They're sort of scattered throughout. I think they were all in one place, and we somehow signaled by color or something that told us where they were, that would make more sense.
So it's currently organized just for everyone's basis. As highest priorities or most of the top lowest priorities go down. So that's the arrangement that's there. So if you were to shuffle them, you might have high priorities on the second page because it happens to be with a continues on or something like that. But it's, it's your decision. We can move them wherever you want.
I did not realize they were prioritized that way. So maybe just, I don't know, may, you know, thinking about like how our brains work, right? So color coding, having some type of distinction, because it's all the same. So, you know, high priority, you know, new work, lower priority, continue work. If it's some way, I don't know, distinguished of between those two categories, I think our brains would understand that process a little bit more. Because for some reason, I didn't realize that it was prioritized already. So thank you for that. I miss that and all the words in there.
All right.
All right. So, sorry, can we just clarify that? Like, so what is the proposal?
Yes, on different colors for continue, amend and new.
All right. So there was a list I gave you, number seven is just talking about resources. Remember on the, the website, it's got three tabs, one of which is additional resources. The only thing on the additional resources was the archive. Well, it was designed to have a whole bunch of other documents. I gave you a list of documents that we were going to add. We, we feel it just is going to add additional resources to people who might be in the plan looking for something. They might be able to go and it may not be directly in the plan, but it might be in the additional resources section. On the next page, numbers 21 to 25, these were a set of recommendations that came from the Conservation Parks Commission. And the first one is a change to the aspiration and then and it's white and saying, yes, that's, I agree, those are fine because they're actually changes to aspiration and goals. I think they're great. I think they're improved over what's there. But I just wanted your blessing to go and say, yeah, let's just keep those and move forward.
Yep, seen a lot of nods.
All right. On the next page, number 39, we had a call, a comment. This is really more of a, of a comment. So, but it was just about disparity about the, the amount of references to Saban's and Country Club Road. And I, I just made the comment that Country Club Road is, is city owned and has city recreation and park facilities. It's just expected that if it's going to end up having more, more references in the document, it's not a one more important or less important. But just, it's got more specific municipal resources. So that's, these next two are also from the same individual. Concerns about Crestview.
Just to clarify, your position on I, item 39 is to make no change?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, which, just to make a note.
Great, thank you.
So the next one, concerns about Crestview appearing in the green print and interior forest block lands. I'll just comment on this really quick so everyone understands. The interior forest block lands are identified by state for protection from fragmentation. It's kind of like the state coming out with a wetlands map. They came out with a forest blocks map. And the map is a requirement in the city plan. And the green print has existed, existed since 2008, and that map has not changed. The areas identified that Parks Commission would like to generally locate parks and recreation areas to meet their goal of five minute walk to recreational and 10 minute walk to natural areas. The plan is not regulatory and explicit, explicitly says it is achieved through voluntary participation. So I just wanted to make sure that was acknowledged and.
So this does not contemplate forcing any particular property owner to allow hiking or other recreation on their land if they don't want to.
Correct. And so, I mean, the recommendation is not to change anything, mostly because we can't remove the interior forest blocks. That would make us in violation. And the other one is, it, it's a plan that has existed for a number of years. And so.
Okay.
The, the third one is, has a little bit of a, of a policy question for you. And it has to do with, he, he notes that as stated, there's a recommendation in the Unified Development Regulation, which are our ZAR zoning. It says regarding parks, the regulation should be amended to require private connections to trails where residential development abuts a trail system identified in the green print. Where a future trail is anticipated in the green print, the new residential development shall reserve space for future private connection to the city's trail network. That is what is in the, this, the city plan in here right now. And his concern was about just the takings and the requirement that, that green print is voluntary. And the intent of that provision, that recommendation is to examine new subdivisions to ensure they take into account existing and proposed trail networks. We don't want someone to build a, a new subdivision that backs up to a trail that none of the residents can get access to that trail because there was no right of way given to it. So that's what we were looking for, as if somebody is subdividing, it wouldn't take a, a, a project that's not, you know, it's not just going to put a trail across somebody's property. It's if you're going to subdivide and sell those lots, you're going to have to reserve that trail. It is a proposal. You certainly have the right as city council to say, we're going to strike that language from that, that section if you want to. I just wanted to put on the table, that was a little bit of the background of why it's in there is because we feel if you're going to subdivide and if you're going to build, then we would expect that you would reserve a, a connection to that trail network. So you can keep it or change it.
So I'm sorry, but I'm not perfectly clear. You're talking about access to the trail, but it seems like we're also talking about if a parcel interrupts a trail now is undeveloped. When it becomes subdivided and developed, the, the trail, land needs to be set aside to extend the trail through the property?
No, just to can, just to can, where there would be a connection to the trail. Just to connect, to connect, connect to a future trail. So obviously, if there's never an agreement to put the trail in, the connection to it would never get built out.
So what does such a connection look like? What are we, what are we talking about?
Usually they're right of ways that will go through 10 foot right of way that would allow access or a foot path that would connect up to that trail. So.
Okay, so you are setting, you would be setting, I'm sorry, you would be setting aside a right of way in the subdivision.
And it would be, it would be private. I mean, we can get down into the weeds of the Supreme Court taking slog. We can't require public, we can't allow public access on it. But what we can say is if you're going to make a subdivision, the, the private, there can be a private connection to that. So it could be only for people who live in that subdivision could be allowed to use it because we can't allow public access without just compensation. But it just goes in, if, if somebody builds in a subdivision, it's one of these ones you look back in hindsight and go through and say, boy, I can't believe they built that whole subdivision and never provided an access to that trail that everybody knew they were going to build, but never actually built. And so it's just one of those ones that comes up from time to time.
I mean, I like the idea of preserving access. I just, I don't understand the scope of it. Either a minimum or a maximum right of way. It's, it seems kind of nebulous.
Yeah, I mean, we're talking city plan level at this point. We, we aren't in the actual zoning adoption. What that provision was looking at was as we're, as we're doing the strategies for how we build out and accomplish our trails and our parks and our recreation goals, what is, what is one of our tools for getting there? Well, one of our tools for getting there would be to have some provisions written into our zoning that would require these new subdivisions to connect to these trail networks. And we could certainly get to a point where when we write it, it's like, we're not going to do it to propose. It's only to existing because it's too nebulous to be talking about a potential trail network. We'll only allow it for actual trail networks, and that's how it gets implemented. But at this point, it was just getting into the plan as to what's one of our tools.
Okay, Jim, then Ben.
So what if they want to put a fence there? Are they not allowing them to put a fence there on their land?
Well, if, if the right of way was put there, it would be a separate.
Right.
Peaks, yeah.
They don't have a right of way, it just adds.
Then.
They can block it off.
Block it right off, yeah, because they've got, yeah, there's, there's no.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, maybe if, we could just talk about like an example, like if you think about the trails up in Hubbard Park, if there was a 10 acre parcel adjoining Hubbard Park, Hubbard Park Trail, and that property was subdivided to build, build homes or something like that. We're talking about like making sure that there's still access across that property for the people who own that land?
Yes. So I mean, maybe an easy example, hypothetical, because I don't know enough of the details. So we'll hypothetically think about a subdivision on Isabel Circle, which might potentially abut a city park. This would go through and say, well, that subdivision should reserve a path to that park system to allow access for those residents to get to that park. I don't know if there is or isn't. But that's where you would look at it, is in the construction of a subdivision. You're like, hey, wait, there's a park sitting right here, and you're going to build a subdivision and not give access to it? And maybe there is, maybe there isn't. I don't know enough about the details as Meredith's. But that's kind of a real world example of that.
Karen.
And when we're saying trails, are we talking about city owned trails or any trail? What about privately owned trails that are commonly used?
This one was identifying and specifically targeting the ones that are in the green print plan, which are existing and proposed city trails. Now, again, as we said, when we get to implementation, maybe it's only the existing ones that get into it. But it's just, it's a list, something that we'll look at in the next five years for us to consider. And maybe it gets passed, maybe it doesn't. It doesn't commit us to having it in here, doesn't commit council to actually doing it. It's just saying, this is our goal, and we're going to look at it.
But then what this could lead to is sometime down the road, when, when we're looking at the zoning ordinance, this could lead to an amendment to the zoning ordinance?
Yes.
Okay. Folks, do we have a consensus on what we think of this?
I'd like to leave it in.
All right, let's leave it in.
All right.
For the time being.
So the next one, a recommendation from Mr. James Moore. Really quickly, that's one that the may was updated to will in the Land Use Chapter, and I would recommend just.
I didn't get it.
It went by, Doug.
Yep.
We good?
So everyone okay with that, with this change, may to will? Or do you need to hear it again? Or do you need to hear it again?
Okay. Good?
Yeah.
All right. Um, so his next comment was about the sprinkler requirement, that our sprinkler requirements are, are stricter than the states and recommended that we, um, align our sprinkler requirements to the state. And, um, my recommendation is that, um, it's a policy question, it's up to you. But I think it would include, we want to have input from the fire department and others. And that if we wanted to make an adjustment to that, that we should couch it as we need to study the benefits and consequences of aligning our sprinkler ordinance with the state. Because I, I wouldn't feel confident doing that without having the fire department's input before we adjust our sprinkler standards.
He's here.
No, no pun intended, but, uh, many years ago when, uh, the sprinkler requirement was being discussed, the, uh, discussion got very heated between people who were saying, well, Jesus, it costs a lot of money to do that. And people were saying, you want people to burn up in their beds? And nobody wants people to burn up in their beds, but it does cost money. So I like the suggestion of putting a study rather than a definite. Work for everybody?
Um, all right, the third question, the, the third, his third comment, um, housing crisis. He wanted to elevate the implementation of using lobbyists to support changes in state law to a high priority. Um, and that's just a policy decision. We can certainly do that. Uh, and I think he was referring to the appeals, people's appeal rights. We've talked about, we need those adjusted, but we can't do that. That's something that changed, needs to state law change. So. If you wanna make it a high priority, we can.
Looking like a yes to me.
Okay. Um, balance the focus of CCR with other large parcels such as Sabans, um. So this is a policy decision. Change the implementation strategy from continue to implement the CCR action, action plan to support housing and community development on Montpelier's larger parcel. So I think his recommendation was he wanted to kind of broaden it from not just focusing on Country Club Road, but focusing on all the larger parcels. Um, I just put in the note that Country Club Road has received additional consideration become this, because the city purchased the parcel for housing. Uh, we have greater control over the parcel and likely development of the parcel because of that site control, um. Staff does not, uh, recommend making, making the change in policy here. I think we should keep CCR as its own policy.
I agree with that.
We, we've got for men through many years of having something that says support housing development at various places and having Country Club Road is one that enables us to actually do it. So, yeah.
Can I?
Yeah, Ben.
Sorry, I wasn't clicking up on item number. Or two.
Uh, it's too bad. Yes.
Mike, one, just can you talk about requirements for the growth center and whether that can accommodate, do you think that that can accommodate all of the rest of nine thousand district? Their being, um, I'm trying to say like, um. We might understand the growth centers that would require uh, playing sidewalks, things like that. And if we, I don't know, do you feel comfortable that?
To have.
I'm worried about whether it'd be something to ensure that you need back to board for a political board of internal.
No, I. No. No.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ben.
All right, there, so there are a number of, um. Comments that I went through within the next set that are, um, from Mr. Weiss. Um, I'll point out a lot of those comments are really targeted on whether or not the plan meets state law in one way or another. And those are really decisions that are gonna be made at the Regional Planning Commission, when they do their review, they will be doing their review, their hearing on July ninth or July eighth, um, and then they'll approve that, that, that same evening. So those questions will be determined through that process. That said, he had two, two pieces. One was talking about incomplete information. Um, and the mechanics, and so I did note that there are some things I will go through. Um, title should be changed to match the natural resources and a bunch of other smaller, smaller pieces that he noted that were accurate that for consistency sake should be corrected. And then in the internal contradictions, um. Uh, so there was some note about things being, um, inconsistent, but, um, I, I didn't feel they were inconsistent. Um. Got that. I mean, we can go, we can go into those if, if you want, I can look it up. But, uh, I didn't think there were any changes that needed to be made with the internal contradictions. Um. And then the mechanics, we will go through and check all those mechanics. Most of them were pretty quick fixes, so we'll go through and make those corrections as well. Um, number sixty was from, um, Counselor, uh, Palin. And, uh, that was about across the street. This is in a couple of places. Uh, the continue to develop a new emergency shelter in the basement of the Berry City Recreation Facility. She pointed out that actually was never voted on. That's absolutely correct. Um, the question I would have for the council is how do you want me to reference that? We could say, or, um, we could say that we should con- continue to consider or study the potential of, potential of a shelter in that facility. We could not mention it at all and therefore removing it from certain chapters. There, there are a couple of ways we could, we could correct that. One is by removing it, one is by saying we should study it. What would you like?
How far are moving it?
There's at least one other place where we mentioned, uh, developing a plan for future use.
Yeah, three, three places and housing, utilities and facilities and homelessness.
I mean, just to, a general develop a plan for future use of the facility seems to me to be non, meaning committee. It's something we need to do and it's non-committal with regard to the actual use. So I, I think that would be a reasonable change in all of those locations.
Adrian.
Um, I think there's two different strategies in that one strategy. So the first one, um, do we wanna continue to develop or, you know, research opportunities for a new emergency shelter? I think that's one strategy. And the second one is um, continue to identify opportunities for the Berry Street Recreational Facility, um, in terms of the usage of that building. I think there's two, I think we can pull those apart.
So one of the items somewhere we should say, we need to continue to work on developing emergency, work with partners to develop emergency shelter space. And two, we need, somewhere we need to say study what should be done with the rec center.
That's what I would recommend.
Everybody like that, like that?
Yeah.
The birth of strategy.
Not, not specific label, but just, uh, we will consider the use of the building.
Yeah.
And plus the other one, yeah.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. Uh, Adrian, I think that's very helpful.
So we're looking, we'll split that into looking, studying for a location for an emergency shelter and then studying what to do with the.
Yeah.
Actually, Berry, Berry Street. Yes, okay. All right, uh, these next ones came from Adrian. I, I compiled them into here. Um, the rental units, we've already decided. Um, why the statement in the housing chapter is red, um, it just, that's the color for that theme for that chapter. The census above it, according to the census is also red. The one below it, Montpelier has a good variety. Also the same color, color has no meaning, but I can certainly go through and pick a different color if people are more comfortable with that.
Oh, so.
Well, if rental was removed from the statement, I think the objection disappears, doesn't it? I mean.
Yeah, I just think for me, red, right? It's like how our brains work. So when I read something that's red, it's like super important. It sticks out to me. It's something that I need to pay attention to. It's bringing me back to elementary school and the, you know, they have the red pens and they mark up all my papers. It's, that's how my brain works. And so when I was reading this, I was like, oh my gosh, what does this mean? But, but it doesn't mean anything, that's fine. That's just where I went in terms of the red, the red marking, but we can ignore that.
Okay.
We can leave on that.
Yeah.
Um, uh, utilities and facilities implementation plan, five to twenty goals are improved in the utility section. I think this goes back to the conversation we had few minutes ago about, um, continue amend and new. This is, you know, very similar. Um, as you break the water sewer, district heat and stormwater into its pieces, some of it is talking about the facility, some of it's talking about the the, the lines and some of it's talking about the, how healthy the funding source is, the, the, and you know, like the water plant is great and the water fund is also good. It's the water lines that are bad. So just counting the number of things that say improve doesn't necessarily mean everything's great because there are only five things that need to be approved. It's actually those, those five things have serious improvements that are needed.
Are pretty big, yeah.
Yeah, they're very big and expensive. Good?
Yeah.
Okay. Um. Uh, only three of sixteen strategies make things better. I think this goes back to the same conversation we had, um. And I think there was one, do I have a year? We can certainly amend some of these if council would like. We could continue and increase funding to capital improvement programs to reflect a desire to spend more money on infrastructure improvements. So there are things we could certainly do, uh, if there's a desire, but again, similar to those other comments that I've made, it's runs the same thing. If you look at each one individually, some of them are simply continuing something.
Yeah, I think my comments there, we addressed in terms of just separating, just so that we understand what we're, you know, adding on to our current and then highlighting the work that we're already doing. I think it, we talked about that, so.
And I'll certainly make a note as we move forward, when this plan's adopted and we're moving forward and talking about making an amendment to the plan. Knowing there's been this much discussion about how we organize the implementation strategies, I can certainly come back and have that conversation early on as to what do we think would be a, 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 the most effective way of communicating. It's a communication document. How can we communicate it? Because maybe we didn't quite hit that target on how we've arranged these. Uh, uh, professional editing, uh, so this, this came up a number of times and I think I sent you all, um, an email over the weekend that just said I had reached out. The estimate we got was, uh, twelve thousand dollars. So I don't know what your desires are. If you want me to put out RFP, right, it's a short time, short-term turnaround. Um, but we do have one individual that is interested in doing it that could do it before the July adoption, but it would be around twelve thousand dollars.
I'm not seeing anyone say, speak up and say, yes, spend that twelve thousand dollars.
It would benefit from copy editing, but, um, it would benefit from other things as well. And so until those other things happen, I would recommend we don't copy edit it at the moment.
We will have other opportunities to do that.
Uh, implementation plan structure, I think we've already talked about this when it's resolved, um. Separate new strategies, continued work. So we've kind of talked that one through already. Us people want to talk some more.
No.
Um. Consider a clear numbering strategy. We just did, uh, earlier, we talked about that. Um, format, concerns, reservations about web-based only versus city plan, um. So the, the web-based plan has and will continue to have an archive version in the additional resources. We also have copies available in the planning office as we do now, and we will continue to make those copies as well. So, um. If there's a, you know, certainly we can go through and print out a certain number of copies that we either bind. There'll be an additional charge for those, um, that the binding costs more money, but the regular prints. And when we do these, we've done these in the past, so you would take the implementation plan and they get folded in. Um, we used to do that with the city plan. It would have full-size maps that would fold out. So we would just do those with the implementation plan. So we would have a set there like that, but, so if somebody wants one, we would have them available.
Sounds good to me.
Okay. Uh. Seventy-four, digital platform as a pilot, field test, collect structured feedback and enhanced features. Um, that's a policy, policy decision. Staff would recommend moving forward with the new format. We can make improvements to the plan over time. I mean, we, we've put the investment into this and I think there's, this was meant to be a foundational document that we would build on. And I think the improvements that will come in the future are really where it's gonna become special. And I think I would recommend it forward, but I've also spent seven years working on.
I think you just got the nod on that too.
I'll just, guys, add one thing that I would, you know, um, as a digital platform and best practice in that, in that world is to really take opportunities. And I think we can still do this, right, as our continuous improvement plan, is to have, you know, people test it. Like what's working, what's not working, how do we make it better? Do some field testing, um, you know, it's it's thinking about like that adult learning principle and how people process information and just constantly tweaking it. I don't think there needs to be like a major overhaul, but I would love for there to be a plan and an opportunity to to test field this and get some feedback and have that be part of that continuous improvement loop for the system and you know, I think it could be amazing, right? I mean, ArchGIS, we have these maps, we can do beautiful dashboards. And I think if we do it very methodically and strategic, I think it could be, you know, we can take it from this good platform to really a great um, you know, city plan that, as you've talked about, could be, you know, something that we could showcase here in Montpelier across the country. I, I just want it to be done, you know, very thoughtfully and slow and steady wins the race with these types of, um, you know, programs and, um, platforms.
I agree. So we're on to Sal's, Sal's list, if everyone's, oh.
So I got a question, um, is that gonna be able to be done in-house or is that gonna cost money?
Of, for the, for the amendments? Uh, those, those are things we can do in-house. I mean, we can always, if there's something special. I think I've mentioned, um, it would be great. The most popular, big thing that's been very successful at communicating are videos. I think my recommendation would be, um, there are people who have particular skills at doing videos. And you really wanna do, right? And so that would be one, I would say, we probably wouldn't do that in-house. We would look for a grant to hire somebody who would be able to do more professional videos than we could do in-house, but we could also do them in-house, uh, we, we do a number of them, but.
Well, I'm thinking most of the changes.
Most of the small changes, we have the ability to do. Yeah, we've got the technical skills of being able to change the, the website are in-house.
Yeah, that, I mean, if we don't wanna spend money on copyrighting, then why do we wanna spend money on that?
Um, so really quick on, on Sal's, um, we'll go, some of them, they have little numbers, MM1, um. So I'll just go through, I flagged a couple of them. Some of them are, are quick agreements. Um, so staff agrees with the first set of comments. Um. Oh, this goes back to the having copies available. So, yeah, we're not opposed to having copies available and in the past we haven't sold very many, but we certainly would make copies, make. Um. Legends, oh, so this, this is about the legends in the actual story maps. If you're in there, the, the legend is a closed box and Sal recommended maybe it should be opened or should be labeled. The labeling was actually more of an issue. So Nick recommended just, he says it's a default, we can default it open or default it closed and we'll default it open and so the legend will be open when you go to that.
There was a related question, maybe I'm getting ahead of it, but uh, about being able to link to a map. You can only link to the, um, section. I was trying to link to a map. And then I noticed there's a little QR code. I mean, it's part of the system.
Oh.
It wasn't something I was trying to do. I was just trying to say, oh, is there a link to this map that somebody can embed somewhere?
Then somebody too.
And there, there is a QR code, but that also only sends you to the. also only sends you to the chapter. It doesn't focus. There's no way to just send somebody to a map, which is not a huge issue, but, um.
But if possible.
If it's a feature that you could enable.
Yeah, I'll see if I can enable that. Now that I understand better where you're coming from. I thought you were trying to insert the QR code and I'm like.
Yeah, no, I, I, yeah.
All right, my computer decides.
The plug, the plug is going under the mayor's feet. So is it plugged in over there?
Not plugged in.
You mean, you mean this plug?
That's like my computer to die.
The, uh, there's, oh, is there another bug on that side?
Sorry to interrupt the flow. I apologize.
Yeah.
Okay, you sure that's not?
I was like, what's happened?
You want, you want to just end it back, back?
Well, it's fine, Mike. I'm, I think you're sorry about that. My computer is.
I I'm glad you caught it as quickly as you did.
That's fine. That's my technology.
It's to charge things before you come here?
It's dead. I don't know what happened.
All right, well, we'll just pause until.
Oh, it might take like an hour to turn it back on, so. I don't know if you want to wait for me.
Well, let's hope it doesn't.
This computer had, uh,
Alright, so.
Just give me the high sign when you're ready to do it. It's 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 ringing up.
It's ringing up. I should have my computer.
You've got the paperwork?
What?
You've got the paperwork of the mates?
Oh, just.
He's asking me if you had any paper for him.
Oh. Yeah.
Okay, so you're okay.
Sounds like decent people. Oh, sorry, um.
It's okay.
All right.
I wasn't looking at my computer battery.
I've already told some folks, so.
Well, I muted the computer, so I'm actually, uh, you be myself, I'm on. Right.
Any second we'll see you appearing. It'll be like the transporter on Star Trek. Clicker into visibility.
Always coming. I know, I need someone to fix this computer. I don't know. It's like a brand new computer too. It takes forever to load up.
So Mike, I don't see any, uh, major disagreements from you with any of my comments, really.
Uh, no, I think most of them I was gonna go through pretty quickly because most of them we've either already discussed.
Do we need to go through them? I don't think we need to.
Okay, clarity. Let me, let me see if there's anything that was in there.
I mean, if there was something that needs discussion, but I mean, some of it was just examples of stuff, but, uh, so, you know, those are not important.
Okay, then then we don't have to go through that.
Yeah, I don't know.
We'll just accept that. Thank you.
Yeah, there's no disagreement from Mike on on the substance of itself.
Yeah, I think on number nine, there was a suggestion to add in the tier one A information that I said, um, but final that.
The designations, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh.
Well, again, you know, that's like a copy edited thing. You know what the designations are. A lot of people reading it won't have a clue.
Yeah, and I can put those up like that.
Okay, Carrie.
So I I'm trying to put together a couple of motions, maybe. And here's what I'm thinking is that we, two motions. One is accept all the staff recommended changes in this document with there's three exceptions, or there's three things that that aren't actually written in here, and I wrote them down. And then the second motion would be to accept all the staff recommended changes in the document from Sal. And the and the things that would be that would be additional changes in the spreadsheet would be just being clear that line two says delete in particular rental units, because that wasn't clear that that was staff recommendation, but we wanted to do that. Line forty three would be changed to add conduct a study of benefits and consequences of aligning Montpelier building, so the state sprinkler. And line sixty is to split into two, it's about the two strategies, one that's about emergency shelter and one is about the Berry Street building.
Can you say the second one again?
Yeah, the second, the second one was on line forty three, which was about the sprinkler codes and so the recommendation was to uh, I think this is adding, not changing anything that's already there. Is that right? I think it's adding conduct a study of benefits and consequences of aligning Montpelier's building sprinkler requirement with that of the state of Vermont.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The first one was forged, true.
And the first one was line two, which was just making clear that we're, we are deleting the phrase in particular rental units.
Recognizing it appears more than one place.
Right. And I, and I think, uh, what do, do other people feel like it's okay for us to not necessarily come up with the exact wording of the strategy? But so for instance, that we want one strategy that's addressing emergency shelter and another one that's addressing planning for that building. But we don't have to come up with the exact wording, right? Staff can come up with the exact wording. Okay.
Sounds great. Now, while we're still waiting for this.
I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Adrian.
Did I just tell you how first minute one is just, just because those are nice and brief, but you wouldn't. Thank you for the brief, uh, motions. By the way, I think somebody's been hearing me complain about this. Um, but I will include on minutes, everything just for reference. So I would, and I'll go through with Mike on those. So I would just encourage you all when the minutes for this meeting come up to, you know, give it an extra look, but it should be fine. So they'll be on there.
Great. Now, I promised that we would, uh, take comments from the public. I see two people online who have their hands up and have had their hands up for for a while. I think there are people in the room who probably are interested in commenting. Doug, I saw your hand up first, so we'll call on you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, question regarding council.
And Doug?
Yes.
State your name, please.
Um, Doug Zorzy. Address Eight Judson Drive, Montpelier.
Okay.
Question regarding council's policy decision relative to trail connection through a two B subdivided parcel. Why does the proposed language need to be specified in the city plan when planning commission consideration will be determined during the permit review process?
Okay. And is that the extent of your comment or do you have something else to add?
That's the extent.
Okay, thanks, Doug. Um, next up, we have Alan Goldman. And Alan, are you still there? I'm seeing you still being muted. Jill, we'll move back to people in the room to see if there are other people in the room who'd like to be heard, and we'll check back on Alan. Anyone in the room would like to be heard? Uh, Steve Whitaker, Ellen Weiss, not Ellen Weiss, sorry, Tom Weiss.
Hello, Thomas Weiss, our resident District Two. I request that when the plan gets revised and updated, that there be a red line addition so that those of us who have been following it and quickly find out what has been changed. Um, thank you.
Thanks.
I see a lot of heads.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. And I assume what you're talking about is red line addition between what was proposed and what the amendments are, not between the current plan and what's, uh, and the new proposed plan.
No, I am talking about between the current plan, which is the May twenty seven draft, and whatever plan comes out of this that will be heard at the public hearings at the planning, regional planning commission.
Okay, we're we're saying, you just said the same thing that I said. What what I meant when I said the current plan, I meant the master plan that is in existence now. Which is not feasible to just what what was originally proposed to us. Okay.
I'm talking about a red line of this edition, May twenty seven, showing what was taken out, what was added to make the addition.
Gotcha.
That the regional planning commission will be reviewing.
Okay.
That will presumably uh, become the final plan.
Mike, do you have a comment about that?
So unlike a a word version where you can very easily do one of these track, track changes documents, this is a document that's assembled online and it doesn't have that built in strikeout feature. So it's going to be a much more labor intensive, um, we're basically gonna have to, um, make a mimic of the, uh, because when we're building the archive version, we're not building it, we're we're building that archive version in uh, Adobe, so it's not gonna be working. I mean, I will work with Nick and if it's possible, we will certainly do it. But we would literally have to manually track every change that we make and then manually make a separate document by making those strikeouts, inserting them into the Adobe.
Okay.
So it may not be possible to do a strikeout, but we will have, I will fill out the matrix. The matrix has another column. And so usually what I've done with those is to put in that separate column and go through what the decision of the council was.
Okay, well, the the request is there. The council hasn't voted to require that, but.
Without, I would have to work specifically with Nick to see how possible it is.
Okay.
We will, if it's possible, we will.
Thanks. Yeah, yes. Very briefly.
Thomas Weiss, again, in, uh, response, um, somebody is going to have to prepare a document somewhere that says this is what's existing and this is how it's going to be changed. So I don't see how it would be onerous enough not to require some kind of a red line version.
Okay, thank you. Steve.
Yeah, Steve Whitaker, um, just on process that this is not supposed to be the work of the city council. This is, this is really off the charts. So I I will bring you the minutes, a forge of the minutes from December seventeenth of twen- the, December twentieth of twenty seventeen, where the council reworked the city plan in one night and and then failed to hold public hearings on it again. And so it's unclear whether we're operating under a currently legal city plan and whether the subdivision regulations that were changed last year were legal because of this kind of dysfunction. And I'm gonna just read you quickly because this is what I told the planning commission on Monday. I would suggest that y'all go look at the recording of the minutes from December twentieth to seventeen, because apparently we aren't operating under legally adopted plan. And therefore, we don't have the right to be amending the bylaws even on an interim basis. Because of those amendments, we're drastically revised by the city council, never put back to a public hearing, which is required by law, and nobody noticed. So the fact that the same scenario is playing out now and most of y'all are either complacent or unaware of it is really troubling because it appears to be by design, not not accidental, that we do this half-assed planning process and then rework it in the city council and then rush and compact everything in, you know, regional commission adoption before anybody can catch up to it. But I caught up to it, that that we didn't hold a public hearing after the city council revised the plan. So that makes it really questionable whether we're even operating. Okay, I've covered that. I've reviewed the memo rega- regarding blaming on the housing committee. I've talked to five or six committees that feel disenfranchised from this process. You're being told that this was all inclusive, but there were problems in the conservation there, co- commission, there are problems in the transportation committee, there's problems in the complete streets committee, there's problems in the homelessness task force, there's problems in the housing committee, there's problems in the restrooms committee, specifically that y'all never met. So my point is, this is a a joke of a process of writing a city plan to try to meet this fake deadline and with, which I fully believe we are not going to get the growth center. So we're gonna have contorted and distorted and disenfranchised a whole lot of people in this process, you know, which you think is righteous, uh, for no cause, where the smart thing to do would be to send this thing back to the planning commission and have them address all the problems and shortcomings and disenfranchised, you know, input groups, committees, and then have it brought before the council. And but the idea that we can't even see red lines or that it's impossible is absurd. You know, the quotes that the matrix, uh.
Thank you, Steve.
So that you're letting Mike sit here and talk for forty minutes to sell you a bunch of amendments and then sh- shutting down people in three minutes? You know, we sat through all that jabber, you know, and that should have been done in the planning commission. So this is really atrocious and disrespectful of the public engagement that is required by law.
Thank you. Um, Alan Goldman, it looks like Alan, Doug, nobody else has their hand up? Is there anyone in the room who'd like to be examined, just one of them? Okay, Alan? Want to try again?
Ah, I think I finally unmuted myself. Thank you.
Here we are, you're on.
Thank you, folks, and I apologize. I couldn't seem to unmute it before. Um, and I apologize, we're sort of out of sync right now. Um, and I apologize, we're sort of out of sync right now. Uh, several of those comments that you spoke to, and I appreciate it, Mike, were worked on and done by Attorney Arapino. And he wasn't able to be here tonight. And I guess Doug and I just had a few comments. We understand what you're trying to do with the trail network, but I think as Mike said, that the trail itself could still stay on private land. It doesn't necessarily have to be a pass-through. I guess we are concerned that it seems to imply um, different things, and so I guess we're just looking for a bit more clarity. And I guess we're also, we're hoping that maybe something, some of, uh, Attorney Arapino's comments may have been considered and adopted. And, um, I appreciate you letting me speak. Thank you.
Thanks, Alan. Any other members of the public listening to be heard? Carrie, I think it's time for your motion, for your first motion.
Okay, so this is a longer motion, but I sent the wording to the clerk already. We can make changes, but that's what I said. So I move that we accept all the staff recommended changes to the draft city plan contained in the spreadsheet dated June eleventh, twenty twenty-five, and make the following changes as well. On line two, delete in particular rental units. Line forty-three, change to add, conduct a study of benefits and consequences of aligning Montpelier building sprinkler requirements with that of the state of Vermont. And on line sixty, to split into two strategies, one which addresses supporting emergency shelter options and one which addresses planning for the Berry Street Rec Center building.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Jim?
Now, my question is, are we adopting the printed version or the online version, or are they the same? And if they aren't the same, which one are we adopting?
There were a couple of suggestions to change this from an online version to have the, uh, the official version be the printed version, and that was, uh, not agreed to, and, uh.
So we're voting for the online.
What's being adopted is the online version.
Okay, I want people to order this. I don't want my name attached.
We're, so for clarity, we're not voting to adopt plans tonight. What we're voting on is to amend the plan. And, uh, so I sent a memo and I'll, for the public's benefits and for anyone who's, um, didn't, uh, catch the memo when it went through was, uh, the process where we, staff has recommended is that we have a meeting tonight. We discuss the changes, we make all the changes. Staff then goes through and edits and amends the plan. Um, and that will be done within the next week. We then warn a new public hearing for July ninth, which is your first July meeting. Um, at that meeting, you will consider the plan and it will be in its final form. Uh, so you, you made some changes tonight. We are warning a new me, a new hearing that will be held July ninth. Then you'll, you'll have, you'll consider it then. We can't have it at the next council meeting because there's not enough time for more than fifteen minutes. Uh, in the interim, the regional planning commission will take up this amended plan. Uh, because this will be presumably the final version. And they will then review the final version for conformance with state law. They will vote on that on the eighth, which is Tuesday before your meeting. So they will conditionally approve it on the eighth. Sending it to you for the ninth, under the assumption that there are no changes made on the ninth, it will be regionally approved event by.
And then is the, is the other part of it that, uh, since there are substantial changes, that it's going to need to be reviewed again by the, uh, planning commission?
Yes, I should mention that. In, in, in the intervening three weeks, the planning commission will meet to take up your recommended changes. They will deter, um, their task is to determine whether or not this will impact our ability to meet the goals and standards of, basically to, basically to certify that you're not making the plan not able to be adopted. So.
Thanks, Mike.
So I propose an action. Um, I'm okay to approve the, uh, changes tonight. And I'm okay to approve the content, but maybe we should make another motion after all these steps to approve the content and to approve the format of the plan. Like, is it print version or, um, online version? Because the regional review board will check the content, right? They are not saying, oh, it should be print.
Yeah, it won't make a difference from a regional standpoint, whether which version it is, paper, paper, or there's no state requirement for paper or digital.
Yeah, so I think we can approve the motion today, uh, but after all these steps, when we, uh, take a vote to approve the final version, maybe we can discuss that, what Jim must mention.
Adrian?
I just want to reiterate, just to make sure I am clear on my brain. So going through these comments, we talked about aligning the online version to the printed version. So it's a mirror image of the same content, the same information. And so once we approve the city plan, in order to make any changes to either, we'd have to go through this whole process again. And so yeah, so even if we do approve the online version, we'll still have the printed versions available, which will be the same information.
No, that's not what Jack said.
Yeah, it is.
No, you said that we're approving the online version.
Yeah, but that's.
Not agreement that that was necessarily the printed version.
But, but Mike has said all along that whatever, when this is approved, it will be, there will be a printed version made available for anyone.
That will be the same. So when we approved that one, we approved basically all.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's what not was, that was not made clear.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to reiterate that, just to ensure that we are all on the same page and that we had clarity around what we're approving and that it is going to be the same exact content, both online and print. And then we talked about today, we have printed versions available. Um, you know, for folks that like to read on paper, which, you know, you have to accommodate as many needs as possible, so. That's.
Are we ready to vote on Carrie's motion? Yeah. If so, yes. If so, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we adopted Carrie's first motion. Now moving on to your second motion.
Okay, I move that we accept all staff recommended changes to the draft city plan in Counselor Alfano's comments document.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Well, we set sixty minutes for this and we came awfully close to making it. Really good work, guys. And I will point out, um, that you go through all these, uh, changes that we've adopted today, uh, great, the great majority of them were, uh, adopted, adopted to be responsive to comments from members of the public or from the council. All right.
Uh, so one last, did we want, did you want to vote to set the, the date for the hearing? I put that as an agenda item if you wanted to make the motion yourselves. Otherwise, you know, Mr. Mayor, you're obviously allowed to set a hearing.
Yeah, do we have to do that, or can I just set the hearing?
Uh, you can set the hearing. That's, Mayor, you've got the ability. I put it on the agenda just in case we wanted to.
My suggestion would be that given that, uh, you've had at least one person question that you're not following process, that you vote for the record that you're holding a public hearing, as you are, and you're also sending it to the planning commission, which you're supposed to do.
Right. Is there a motion to set a public hearing for, uh, July ninth? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks, Mike.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, midi on committees review.
All right, just bear with me while I get situated here. Okay, so I'm going to get started, um, and I'm going to share my screen in a minute, but I'm first going to just walk through the memo that was provided in the packet just for some general information about this process. Um, so back following town meeting, um, council decided that it wanted to take a look at the committee structures. Um, and so, uh, subcommittee was put together of, uh, Counselor Cohn and Counselor Doyle and myself and city staff um, to begin reviewing committees. Um, that, uh, process finalized, um, on, uh, May twenty-third. Um, and so the, the memo and the packet is reflective of that. Uh, and so what we're looking to do is take a look at the current twenty-seven committees. Um, and we have recommendations for each, um, and hopefully, you know, bring that number down a little bit, um, based on the purpose of those committees and, uh, the the role that they're serving. Um, and so the memo references bringing the committees as proposed from twenty-seven to eighteen. Um, there are additional recommendations in the memo such as, um, defining the role of staff and council on committees. Um, also taking a look at the types of bodies, um, so defining those so that it would be really clear on, you know, what, uh, those are, and then also suggesting a tier classification system, uh, which really breaks the committee structure into three types. The first, um, is required legally, uh, the second is, uh, policy-based, and then the third, um, is uh, task-based or ad hoc. Um, and so those are typically time-bound and for a very specific purpose. So for tonight, really what I'd like to do is take a look at that master sheet that is in the packet. Um, I'll go over a little bit of the methodology and how we review that, um, and hopefully with or with amendment, um, approve that, uh, list of committees. Um, and then from there, accept the defined staff and council roles, hopefully based on the memo, but also open to suggestions based on discussion, of course, and then, um, take a look at accepting the type and classification and tier, um, also provided for in the memo. Um, and then we'd also like to recommend that there is an annual reporting process following town meeting for tier two and three committees, just so we can get a report out on the work that's being done. Um, so I'm going to jump into, um, the, uh, master sheet at this time, if that seems reasonable. Great. Um, so I'm going to share the screen here. And so what you can see on the screen, minimize a little bit here. So what you can see on the screen, um, the committees are, um, sort of sliced into three different tiers. So the blue indicates tier one, um, and so all of the recommendations here that were provided to the subcommittee from staff are to keep these committees because we're required to have them. Um, the second, uh, tier is highlighted in purple. Um, and so these are, uh, committees that are policy-based. Um, there are some recommendations within this tier of committees that may be put on hold, and then there's a little bit of an indication or descriptor provided. Um, and then the final category, tier three, is, um, ad hoc in nature or, uh, time-bound advisory, uh, committees. And so those also, um, do have some recommendations for, uh, changes. And so what we did is we took a look at, uh, the current committees and really looked at, you know, whether or not committees were meeting, um, and also if, uh, those committees continue to serve, uh, an important purpose. Um, we also did a survey, which is included in the packet, to get feedback from those committees. And then on the back end, after, um, putting this together, we did, um, seek feedback um, from the committees that were recommending changes to. Um, so what I'd like to do is just go through, um, the committees that were recommending changes on. Um, there are nine in total, um, that we, we'd like feedback on. Um, and so I'm just going to kind of go through the line. I also, um, earlier today did forward on um, comments from those committees, uh, just so that you have that to consider. And I will also make note of what the, the committee did say. Um, and so I'd also like to take another step and kind of slice that grouping a little bit further because there were some committees that said, you know, yeah, sure, your recommendation's good. So I'd like to kind of start there, um, if that's okay.
Jim?
Um, can I ask a question about the blue section?
Sure.
Because we're moving beyond that, right?
Yes.
Um, what was, uh, the, um, now they're all have to be kept?
Yes.
The tree board can't be put with conservation commission?
Um, no. Or that wasn't something that we considered? Yeah, sure.
Uh, after receiving the survey result, our subcommittee have noticed that, uh, committees do not want to combine with the other one. That's why we uh, kind of switch our, uh, mindset to create this like three tiers, um, structure, so.
So we're pick, we're choosing to not put it in, but it's not. I thought it was kind of like the tree board has to be there and the conservation, but we're just choosing to keep them separate. Is that?
Yes, I mean, that's the way that they exist today.
Okay, I, I, it just sounded like they were legally had to be separated, but they don't now.
I believe there is a statutory reference to the conservation commission, but I'd have to verify that. But we did, we didn't, you know, take up combining them or not. And so we could certainly, that was a recommendation coming from this review that you wanted us to take a closer look. We certainly could.
No, no, I just, I guess what's, yeah, go ahead.
No, I totally get your question, right? It's just like clarity on like, are we, are they actually legally required to be separate entities? And I think the answer is no. But like based on the evaluation of the committees.
Okay.
Chose.
The only reason I was asking, they're both natural resources, you know?
Yeah.
And if we're trying to consolidate, it sounded like two that could be, to be honest with it.
Adrian?
I would, I, I was under the impression that the blue was legally required. That's how I was looking at this. So I think it would be very helpful to, you know, indicate somehow by an asterisk, like what is required by law that the city has, um, in terms of a committee. We, we don't have to do it today, but I think, you know, it'd be very helpful for us to know, and then what are those requirements of that committee as stated in that, you know, whatever the law is, I don't know. So I think that might help.
We could, we could definitely provide the statutory reference in a future iteration of this draft, and just to provide that clarity, that's no problem. Um, and most of them do have a statutory reference. Um, there are a few that, you know, may, you know, not, um, but are required. Like, for instance, looking at the sprinkler variance committee, that one, actually, there's little asterisks here in the third column over. And, um, that one doesn't meet very frequently. And actually, in fact, we thought because it doesn't meet very frequently and, you know, it's, um, something that, you know, isn't really active, we could remove it, but then looking at the ordinance as there is a citation, and so then it's really required and we may need it. So you know, in the review that we did sort of have some, some things that we didn't, didn't pop up like that, but we're happy to add a column.
Thanks. Okay.
Okay. Um, so I'm just going to, the committees that I'm, I, I'd like to kind of focus on, um, for the conversation, if we're kind of in agreement with sort of the general gist of this master sheet. Um, there are a few here, um, that I'd like to talk about. The ADA Advisory Committee, the Investment Committee, the Public Arts Commission, the Stormwater Utility Committee, um, the Community Advisory Board, the Homelessness Task Force, the Restroom Committee, um, the Social Economic Justice Advisory Committee. And then there is a, a change that, um, is recommended to complete streets. And so we're not recommending that that committee go away. Um, but there are a few options for that committee, the, um, Transportation Infrastructure Committee. You know, we, we've recommended to combine it with complete streets. There's also an additional recommendation, uh, that came forward in, in this review that, you know, council may consider eliminating the, um, Transportation Infrastructure Committee as an alternative option. Um, let's see here, the, yeah, so that, that's pretty much, those are the committees that I'd like to kind of focus on. Um, and just make note of and determine, you know, one way or another, which way we go with them. Um, so just kind of starting and with the ones that, um, we got feedback that the, the committees, it made sense for us to. you know, actually just hold. So the Investment Committee wrote back and said, yeah, we understand the recommendation to consolidate this and maybe our old would be the better term. And just have staff work on sort of the city investments with Maple Capital. So that one, I think we could remove from the list. Say the Stormwater Committee, just based on where we're at with the development of the Stormwater Utility. We are recommending that that one be placed on hold until further notice. At such a time, we would have Advisory Committee for that. The Community Advisory Board is a Community Justice Center Advisory Board. And the CGC is undergoing some pretty significant changes, so we would just prefer to hold that one for right now. The Restroom Committee was agreed that that one could be placed on hold because it's already met the mission that was prescribed. And then, let's see here, so with the Social Economic Justice and Advisory Committee, we are recommending that that one be on hold based on quorum and to determine whether or not there would be a future use for that committee. And then the Transportation Infrastructure Committee. So depending on whether or not council would like to consolidate that or eliminate is up for consideration. So those are the ones that are kind of, you know, in the, the mix there. And then just going through the, the ones that I really hope that we can maybe discuss a little bit further, the ADA Advisory Committee. So this one, you know, we do feel like it could be put on hold and sort of the tasks associated with this committee could be dealt with administratively. And so there was some comment and feedback from the chair of that committee. Just sort of noting that there is importance to that work, which we totally agree. It's just a matter of whether or not there's a public facing committee associated with that. And then from there, the Public Arts Commission, we have received feedback and I believe there's somebody here that would like to speak to that. And so this one has been appealed to save. So it's just something to consider. We, when we drafted this recommendation, the Public Arts Commission had not been meeting. And so that's why we, you know, actually put it into the category of fold or eliminate. Sure.
And I think it is still there. We also add a recommendation, maybe Montpelier Alive can take the staff workload because Montpelier Alive does so many events or initiatives related to that committee. So this is again, like a suggestion for the council to consider.
Can we speak to this now? Just, you know, I just think definitely have heard from the Arts Commission folks that they're still, and I would love to hear from Bob. There's still energy around that committee and they sent us some great statistics about the work that they've done. I think it feels like there's some questions just around the structure and, you know, I would suggest that like, we absolutely can continue them and keep working with them to figure out whether it's folded into another entity or not, or it stays. And I think that that would have to be a conversation with Montpelier Alive, right? But just, I think, stick with them a little bit longer to figure out what works best for everybody.
Adrian.
I just wanna step back for like one second, but then we can propel ourselves forward. I just wanna note, it's just on my mind in terms of committees, right? So in the world that we're living in, once again, literally what I think about every day and how we think about our budgets and the staff and, you know, thinking about the city staff in terms of not having capacity to do, you know, everything that we want to do. These committees are so critical to our government infrastructure. And I just wanna make sure that, you know, just thinking like the Housing Committee and some of the committees I've, members I've talked to, it's, you know, we wanna make sure to provide as much clarity to these committees as possible because they're doing the work of the city. They're volunteers, they're spending hours and hours and hours of their time to support the place that they love. And so when we go through this exercise, I want us to just think about, we haven't gone through our strategic plan yet, so it's kind of, you know, a little wonky in terms of thinking about our committees and aligning to the strategic plan. But I think there's definitely an opportunity to, you know, think through this process and make sure that one, you know, we have committees that are really, really doing the work that we have to do in the city and that we're valuing, you know, we value everyone's time and commitment to the work that they're doing. So as we're looking at these, I just don't want there to be a committee that's nice to have. It's something that, you know, is gonna help move our work forward and continue to make Montpelier the place that we want to live in. And if there's something that's missing on here, we should also think about that too. So I just wanted to say that out loud, it was on my mind. I know we went right into the nuts and the bolts of it, but I just wanted to reframe that as we think through this, that these are people, they're volunteers and they're really doing the work of the, of an extension of who we are. So thank you for your time.
Hey. Couple of questions. One is with regard to the committees in blue. Someone raised with me the question about whether the Design Review Committee and the Development Review Board could be, could be combined. And I don't know if that's feasible or not, but since I heard that as a suggestion, I thought I would at least bring it up and it looks like Mike's not here anymore. Do you have a thought about that?
I mean, we can certainly look into it. Don't have any answer for it.
Yeah, so again, based on the survey result, the input was please do not combine any comedies. It came from the committee members who completed the survey. That's why we are leaving that decision to the council. If you wanna tell us, okay, let's combine the comedies, then we can make another study. But based on the survey results, subcommittee decided to suggest to keep these comedies. They are appeared on this list, but it's, it's an option and it depends the council decision.
Thanks. Two, my second question is somewhere in the, I think in the materials that we got from you, there was a comment about the, the role of city council members on these committees. And I just think it's worth pointing out that for the Board of Civil Authority and the Board of Abatement, all the members of the City Council are members and it's not, and not just advisory. And then the third point is that I, I think the suggestion with the ADA is, the committee is fine. I was on the ADA committee for a few years. I know it's very important, the work the committee does is very important, but I would suggest that part of it should be building in a way for city staff to get input from VCIL and possibly give the association for the blind and visually impaired to inform the work on, on those issues.
Jim.
Well, I was on the ADA committee back, I think I had something to do with starting it. And I am actually disabled, so. And I know it was through VCIL, they had a big role when I was on. Kim Brittenham was real important on it. And, but you know, I think staff at this point knows are very, I think we're all much more aware than back then of ADA compliance than we were then. So I'm okay with, you know, kind of the staff, I think is educated enough to, you know, that we gotta do this. But back then, it wasn't always that way. I mean, there was, it was still kind of thought of, well, we have to do this, I mean. So I'm okay with that, but my question is, rather than design, put design review with development review, I think a better fit would be design review with historic preservation. Because they're both, the mission is to preserve the historic resources, basically kind of the same thing. Not so much development or development review isn't really concerned about historic. Not like the other two are, but I, you know, so I would like to know why design review and historic. And, and again, I'm not sure why tree board isn't part of, you know, conservation. It seems like they would be a good match. So I mean, if we're talking about consolidating, I guess I'm not, I need to hear the reasons why those are, for those of you who did this.
Sure. I, I wasn't one that did this, but there's a specific statute about conservation commissions that calls or allows municipalities to have conservation commissions and defines what they can and can't do. And there's a series of statutes about tree management and I actually talked about the tree warden. I don't know, or I don't remember the history of the tree board here. I think it was initially formed to help support the tree warden regarding to shade trees and planting trees and those kinds of things. So I think, I think they do have different basis statute of what they do. One is strictly about the street trains and cutting trees and that and that is well, conservation efforts on. And with regard to designer view development, again, my opinion is better than me, but those are part of the regulatory process. So, you know, if you have a permit, we have a design review district in our zoning that requires you to go through our design review. So unless we make a change in our zoning, you have to have it. And then they make a recommendation to the development review board, who may or may not accept it when they prove the final permit. And historic preservation, not sure where they fall in, if they're regulatory or not, I think they have to learn more about.
That was, that's the, my concern. I mean, Jack was the one bringing up somebody's, I, I know, yeah, I know that we can't take out the design review and development, the way it's set up now, but I didn't, I don't know if that's true about the historic.
It actually, I think it's, I believe, a requirement of a certified local government, where CLG, which provides us with additional resources from the state. And I'm pretty sure that it's a requirement that you have a historic preservation commission to be a CLG.
Right, I think that's when we formed it actually.
That's all I needed to know.
So folks, we have, we have proposed also to make certain changes. Does anyone have thoughts about specific ideas? And Adrian, you got your hand up.
So I was hoping to see a little bit more like structure, I'm a structure person, this is just who I am. And so when I think about these committees and I do take self responsibility that I don't go to the city website and look at their meeting minutes because it's clunky, right? So I, I would love for there to be an opportunity for each of these committees to be required to have like a charter. That's, I don't know what the word would be, in my world, it's called a charter. Like what is the goal? What is the milestones? Like, why are they in existence? And have very specific goals that they want to achieve. And I think an annual report back to council is too far. I feel like I miss a lot of work that's happening and by the time we hear what's happening, for example, the short term rentals during our meeting last year, I was like, wait, what? Why are we working on that when we need to build housing? And so they've already spent a year on that entire project of, once again, their volunteer time that they were working on. And so I think it would behoove us, one, to have better transparency into these committees by having some type of system that's easy to access so that we can see each committee's charters, what their milestones and their goals are. And I think they should be quarterly and I think we should, you know, hold them accountable to say, okay, you're doing this, are you not doing this? And we don't need to micromanage it, but I, I think there needs to be a balance of clarity around the work they're doing and transparency so that they're not doing work that is not in alignment with our city plan, our strategic goals. And I think a, an annual report is too, too far gone because that could be hours of needs.
Ben.
I, I totally appreciate that. I think part of that could be mitigated by making sure that there's city council, you know, presence at those various committees. But I also think we should go back to, you know, why did we start this conversation? Because there was a significant lack of capacity to manage twenty seven separate committees, right? And, you know, that's just the reality of, of where we are in our city staffing. And is this the highest and best use of their time? And I worry about like quarterly reporting requirements that would be presumably administered by staff. And it would feel like one step forward, two steps back. I, I love the idea of a clarity around the charge or, you know, I think that that's really great, but I think, you know, to add additional kind of reporting requirements and I don't know what other word to use, but bureaucracy to, you know, manage it, I think defeats the purpose of trying to limit the number of committees because we have lax staff capacity.
I'll, I'll point out something, I'll get you after that, Jim, but when there, there was a time, it's very recent, that members of the council who would, who were serving on these various committees, would periodically in our council reports would report back to, to the council on what we're doing. I'm on the ADA committee and I can tell you what we're doing is this stuff with the Hubbard Park or the, the pool grounds or whatever. And, and Donna Bate was very diligent and great at doing this and, and she was on many, many committees. But, but I think that that is one way to keep council pride. Then it, it's a matter of people remembering to make those reports. You're not, none of us are on a committee just because, just for ourselves, it's for keeping up communication between the council and the committees. Jim.
Yeah, let me give you some history. The reason why we had a councillor on every committee was because a committee went amok and cost us forty four thousand dollars to fix what they did that we didn't know about. Maybe Bill, you remember that, out in front of City Hall? And that's when I proposed that we should not have a committee without a councillor on it. So we have somebody making sure they stay on course because they know what the council wants. And I know it means we have to divide up the committees among ourselves, but that's what we did. And I used to sit on seven to nine and I reported on all of them. To a, I'm sure Bill can back me up on this. We used to, we wanted to know what they were doing. Why do we have committees if we don't know what they're doing? Or if they're not doing what we want them to do? That's the whole point of committees. If they're doing something on their own and then they come in and ask us, well, we kind of thought this is how we should go. What do you think? We're like, wait a minute, this isn't what we wanted you to do. So we had a councillor on every committee kind of as a watchdog, more or less, to make sure they were doing what the council wanted. Because I'm telling you, when that committee ran amok and the people were screaming at us, we had to come up. It cost us forty four thousand dollars to fix it. And that's why we went down this road originally. So I'm willing to take on, you know, two or three more committees. So, but I think we should have somebody watch that or just not have it then.
Ben.
Yeah, I am serving on several committees and one of them was homelessness task force, but I couldn't attend. So I feel really, I couldn't attend their meetings because I changed my job and my timeline really doesn't align. And, and it is also on me, I never ask to change the meeting time. I should have done, but like suddenly I thought, oh yeah, I cannot make it. And luckily we have Sal on that committee. So, but at the same time, I'm thinking we are only six city councillors. Like I don't know how many more committees we can serve. So it is important to have lesser committees than we can serve and it will be effective because I am working full time. So, and I'm already serving on, I think, three, four committees with the new task force because they are limited, time bound. So yeah, I think it is important if we want city councillors, serve on those committees, bring back really efficient report and being there really to create the bridge between the committee and city council. We need to reconsider, reconsider the number of the committees.
Yes, go ahead.
So I just, there's one more committee on this list that I didn't, wasn't quite there with yet. And there's, there's also, I believe, members here that would want to speak to it. And I know that you did get some information from them, so the homelessness task force is another. And I, I know that you did get um some information from them, so the homelessness task force is another one of those committees that. You know, would really require some consideration um for what to do next and. Uh, to Adrian's question about sort of the charter, so the mission within um, this document is sort of the charge of those committees. Um, that's been sort of set by council, if not by statute or ordinance. Um, and so that is within the documents, um, just so you can kind of see what they're about and what they've been tasked with. Um, we don't have sort of the specific goals. I mean, there are some. That do have, you know, some action plans associated with them and. I um was hoping to kind of take up the ones that we wanted to, you know, discuss in terms of whether or not to place them on hold first, but. I also will note here and then I'll, you know, kind of. Reserve the rest of it for discussion, but um, the housing committee is another one that you should talk about. We're not suggesting that you. Change that, but you might want to think about the charge just because of the numbers on that committee. Um, and what that looks like. And one of the recommendations with the homelessness task force was that perhaps. They would be combined with the housing committee. Um, and while, you know, housing is a key policy issue for. Homelessness, it, it doesn't sort of address the whole issue, which is a lot of, you know, what the uh task force had responded. They appreciated. That, you know, connection. However, there are a lot of social issues associated with. Um homelessness that aren't addressed in housing, so um, I just wanted to note those things real quick.
Thanks, Kelly. Um, I see at least one hand raised. Online and I think, understanding maybe people present who'd like to address this, I'm gonna start uh. With Zach, as you've got your hands up, hand up, thank you.
Um, I'm Zach Hughes, um, Montpelier. And um, I. Uh, you'll maybe hear from my other colleague tonight on the, uh, the colleagues. The homelessness task force, I will also briefly just uh mention right now, the restroom committee. I have. Mentioned this uh very briefly, I can't do it very long here because of the time, but. Um, we're struggling with uh, membership mainly because. Uh, we couldn't get anything really done. We, in my view, I just read what the mission was and I kind of feel like. We accomplished it. But there's no implementation uh ability because of money. Um, and we did look at stuff and we do have, you know, we did have a list of bathrooms that were available prior. To the flood that get, that caused us some issues. As I said, I would love to send a document separate of this meeting. Um, but I also noted that attempting to communicate with staff was difficult, maybe because they thought the committee. Wasn't meeting and maybe they were too busy. Uh, ADA also experienced this, just to let you know, and uh, so I'm a little concerned about that. Um, I would like to speak very strongly that ADA should be kept. Um, that y'all should do it on a uh, you know, maybe reduce the meetings down, but they should be available for community. This isn't just a staff issue. This is a community issue and there are ongoing stuff that happens. Um, while I was on the committee, or not on the committee, but attending. I let the committee know and staff know about critical issues in the city that happened. Um, so I think. The ADA to me is still around and very important, and I respect. Jim and Jack's take on it, um, but I still believe that ADA issues are still out there. Um, and I believe we need a community output. Your chair on the ADA committee is the president of the board. At Vermont Center for Independent Living. So if we can't have an ADA committee, maybe you can find another way to have a community um. Output there because ADA is really important. I think we all know that. Um, I wanna, I did, you have my report. Um, that of my colleagues. On homeless task force, I really kind of got to the meat of the matter and I said. Uh, maybe you want to eliminate the task force since it's. Done its thing, um, and turn it into a committee with an ongoing purpose. Um, we should have done this a while back. Because the task force issued a report. In November of twenty nineteen, by the way, these reports would be consistent with what. Um, was just commented on here about having a yearly report, um, should have report. Um, but I think. We're about to face other problems with homelessness now because H ninety-one has been vetoed tonight. Um, so I think. We need to keep it and I would urge um. The uh, the city council to keep it as a, turn it into a committee with a recharge, a little bit of a recharge. The reality is we're not going to uh, solve homelessness overnight, but if we can meet some. You know, more concrete goals, and I know some of the folks in the audience. Won't agree with me that we didn't get anywhere, we did get somewhere. Um, but we need to have some implementation. And I need to see, personally, as a citizen in a, I would like to see more commitment, a little bit more commitment for the city. The most powerful commitment I saw real quick here. Is when Bill kind of jumped on board when we talked about pallets. That's about as close as we came to a commitment that I saw.
Thanks, Zach.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Thanks, Zach, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Anybody in the room would like to be heard? Just kind of. No, not at the moment, no, no, their hands are raised, and they may, they may still raise their hands.
So I, I want to make sure that the mic gets passed as much as possible to include as many people. Um, my name is Victoria Rodine, I have. Um, been on the homelessness task force for about two and a half years. Um, I've been the co-chair, I think, for about two months, so for a very short period of time. Um, and. I've been involved in advocacy of one kind or another with unhoused people um off and on for many years. I, I was very concerned when I heard about the committee review, most of all because we didn't know what was happening until very, very late in the game. And we would have welcomed anybody coming to our meetings, which happened um. Twice, they used to be three times a month, in months ahead, three Wednesdays, they're usually two times a month. Um, we normally have, um, we, I can't remember the last time we didn't have a quorum. But we normally have everybody in the task force at every meeting despite the inconvenient timing. And Palin, you, you're, you're right that had we known about your scheduling issue, we could easily change the time of the meeting. And would still welcome doing that if. That would be helpful to do. Um, and we've had very active involvement from um Sal Alfonno as the city councillor involved and um. Have been working very hard at seeing what can we do to build a stronger bridge with the um. City council, where for all the reasons that we outlined in about ten pages that we circulated to. You, once we knew that you wanted to hear something from us. Um, there are, um, we're, we're a very active committee, um. They, they're, the crisis of homelessness in throughout Vermont and in Montpelier and in central Vermont, um. Is, I think, something like three hundred percent worse. Than at the beginning of COVID. Um, this is a um, crisis that everybody on the committee is actively involved in addressing. And um, doing what we can do to reach out to others and to work within the structure of the city. To support the city and carrying the responsibility that we have as a community to make sure that everyone in our community is safely housed. And that people who need support to stay safely housed refuse, receive, receive the support that they need. Um, and I, that, that's about, I mean, everything that I wanted to say is in the report that I spent most of Memorial Day writing when I wasn't at a funeral. Um, and the, um, Zach, Meredith and I all wrote some pieces in response to the um Kelly's. Request, um, I think we have somewhat divergent ideas about um. A range of different possibilities for moving forward. I, I actually personally support merging the committees. Because my experience has been that um, the lack of housing is what is upstream of homelessness in Vermont. Um, but I completely agree with my colleagues who say that the risk in doing that is that we're already working um, in solidarity with. A very marginalized and very stigmatized um. Community of people who are largely invisible to some of the more comfortable residents of our town. And we're very concerned about whether um, their interests will even be seen, let alone represented. Um, if we're merged with the housing committee. I, I can say so much more about this, but really everything I had to say I wrote and what I read to you, so. When I sent you, so I hope you read it.
Thanks, story. Anybody else in the room would like to be heard? Steve.
Steve, what do you think? I want to tie a couple threads together. Adrian brought up about these are people, these are volunteers. Polling the committees is not sufficient, uh, I think. Putting the two least experienced counselors on this committee uh might not have been the smartest move, uh. You need to poll the individuals because you have, you risk disenfranchising and getting a lot of people who have been willing to volunteer for committees. To not sign up anymore. Uh, just by how you're politicking this. Uh, frankly. I, I support merging housing. And homelessness, I originally persuaded the council to create the homelessness task force, but in five years, it's accomplished nothing. And it's well-meaning heartfelt conversations, but it's not got. Suitable sized lockers for folks to store their backpacks and possessions in, nor showers, nor bathrooms. Nor designated places for camping, nor the goals that were set at the first meeting. So I think that a committee that's focused on housing is going to have an agenda of how are we going to reach this goal? And how soon? And what can we do to take, get rid of that barrier? And that same kind of get it done logic needs to be applied to homelessness solutions. You know, instead, we're quietly turning a blind eye as they take away the benches and take away the shelters and take away the bus stops and. And basically, you know, punish these folks for being unhoused. So. Consider. Holding a public hearing on this topic, inviting, individually polling the members of these committees. You got everybody's email address from when they signed up for a committee. You know, take your time and get this done right. I'm kind of aghast at some of the gaps of knowledge that. Were, were exhibited uh after this report was produced by staff, so. Um. It's too important. I agree that we should pare down the number of committees. Make them more effective, make them more accountable. I don't think quarterly reports are unreasonable. It's just another way of them formatting their minutes. You know, if, if it were, if our website wasn't so torturous, you could go and find out from, from the minutes what they're doing, but. I wouldn't wish that upon any of you, although some of you deserve the punishment.
Thanks, Steve. Um, is there anybody else in the room who'd like to be heard? So I, I've got a suggestion. Um. Going over the list of committees that we've talked about, I've heard. I don't think I've heard any objection to. The proposals to put on hold the investment committee. Or to remove the investment committee and put on hold the stormwater. Committee, community advisory board and C JAC committees and to merge the complete streets and, and T I C. Committees, so. I don't know if it takes a motion, but I, I suggest that we do that. And if we wanted to do more study for some of the others. Um. It uh, it probably, probably worth doing that. Sorry? I don't, I, I understand that, but thank you. Um, so folks, what do you all think of that idea?
You say, I'm sorry, Chad, you say it one more time, I think it's, I want, I want to say I think it's a good idea, I'd like to hear.
Su- support the proposal to uh terminate the investment committee. Put on hold the stormwater utility committee, the community advisory board. And C JAG. And merge complete streets and M T I C. And then. Further study for the other items. Well, Corey, you're on, you've got your hand up. While people are pondering that, I'll call on you.
Hello, uh, Corey Lyon with Public Works, I staff both the. Complete Streets Committee and the Transportation Advisory Committee. Um, I was just going to recommend, um. If there's further study to look at this, maybe. Um, including the merging of those two committees with that further study. Um, just to kind of, I, I don't think we're there yet. I think we could be though. Um, but I'd like to, uh, I'd like to discuss it at their next meeting and, and kind of get the feel.
Thanks, Corey. So that would then be taking, taking out my suggestion about those two committees. Four committees to either end, one committee to end and three to put on hold. Somebody want to make that motion? Carrie, you may, go ahead.
I have super down to get rid of.
Yeah.
To the merge.
That's what he said.
As I said, investment, well, one to get rid of completely, which is the investment committee. And figure this staff would just work with our invi- investment advisors on that. And then three to put on hold.
What's the difference between? Hold, like what is hold?
I, I'll take a stab at that. Um, so the stormwater utility is something we're going to need to revisit in the future. We just don't really have the capacity to work on it right now. We've got some billing issues that are in the way of that. But at some point, we're going to need. We do want, I think it's been a goal, at least to bring that back and to create a stormwater utility, so. We would need to reactivate a committee at that time, you know, basically put that on hold. Uh, the C J C looks like they're going away, so we're basically putting the cab on hold, but if for some reason they. Surfer, you know, it would likely be, and, and the same with C JAC, like there's, hasn't been much, but you know. Could be a group that we want to resurrect at some point in time, so I think that was the, the thing that. And I'm open to other proposals. This is something that we scheduled for thirty minutes and we're at forty-six now. Jim.
Do we have an active housing committee now?
No.
Well, we've got a committee, I don't think we have members. But I don't think we're, I don't think anyone's proposing to get rid of the housing committee.
Example of not, not, you know, the council not knowing what a committee was doing because they. Forwarded some things that didn't get accepted, nobody, I didn't know anything about that. I don't know if anybody here did, so. I think that was a perfect example of having a committee that if a counselor was on it. Well, they weren't telling us anything, man, I don't know who they were. But we weren't being told anything, so that's a perfect example of. If we are going to have a committee, we need to know what they're doing and we need to have somebody that can keep it on track. And there's not, now, a lot of these things, just for a second in the blue, a lot of them don't even need counsel, I mean. Design review, development review, historic preservation, planning, recreation, cemetery, they don't need counsel. So there's a lot we can take off the list for having a counselor on. But there are some, I think, housing and if we're going to combine housing and homelessness, we need a counselor on that. Um, and if we're going to put ADA in it, then, okay, counselor on it, but. We, there are some that. We need a counselor on because I didn't know, I, I wanted to go to the very first housing committee, they canceled it. Then I never knew when they were doing another one and then all of a sudden I hear most of them are quitting, so. This is a perfect example of dysfunction, so. I think that. If we're going to do this tonight, and we're going to decide what ones we're going to keep, we need to pick who's going to be on. Because what is the point? We're just setting up a committee that's going to flounder again?
Kelly.
Uh, thanks, thanks, Jim, for your comments. Um, so. I think our intention really was to get through this sort of review first and then come back to do committee assignments. Because we have, you're right, we haven't done that yet. Um, and I think that we need to do that. And I also think that, you know, one of the things that I, I think we're going to need clarity on, um, is the further study piece. Um, what do you mean by that? Um, because, you know, is it? Further study indefinitely? Is it further study with a timeline? Is it further study? With missions and charters and quarterly reporting? I just, I want to make sure that we're really clear on, you know, what the um. Expectation is with the further study, and then I think also I just um. Want to make sure that it is known that we do intend to, you know, come back um, to make sure that council members can be assigned. Because we have been waiting to do that with, for this review.
Uh, Ben and Palin.
Just real quick, I think there, there's just like multiple things going on here, right? So. I, I think we should go back to what Jack was talking about, like the non-controversial ones, that we're all kind of in agreement, like, let's settle on those. I really love your question about like, what does additional study look like? I think we could suggest something like. Two counselors meet with the committee in question and have a conversation with them about what a path forward looks like. And then reports back to the full council. And then, um, the third thing is too, Jim, around your questions about like, well, you know, we need to have like clarity around the roles. Uh, you know, that's the other part that I think is lined out, laid out pretty well in the, in the memo, just. Uh, you know, that's the other part that I think is lined out, laid out pretty well in the in the memo of just, you know, providing a lot of clarity about what is the role and responsibility. For everyone, like on the committee, the counselor, everybody. And so I think when we, I believe Kelly, you're asking that we adopt that. And separately, right? So I think between those those kind of three things. And I think like the homelessness and the housing task force is a really good example. Like both of those committees, I think, are in really challenging places right now. And I think actually getting them all together in one room and having a common conversation about is there a path forward for merger? Or do they really need to be separate? I think might be where we need to be at this point.
Pellen.
Yeah, I was just like, uh, mentioned the same thing. So. Does council want city staff to do the additional study? Do we wanna create another subcommittee? Do you want, does the council want us to continue with uh working with Kelly? So, and also. It for, to me, for the further step should be also maybe creating an orientation for the committee members, right? Oh, uh, what is the public meeting rules? What what the roles are, what do you need to do with your minutes? And also, I mentioned this, I I don't know, two or three meetings before. What is the policy on committees um when they wanna apply grants? So is there any checklist? Is there any policy that they can follow? But these are all next steps. So yeah, what council wants to do. Uh, to decide another subcommittee with new members or with the staff continuing to study on this issue? Or initial subcommittee should um continue. Thank you.
I will just say that we had a long list that was a committee introduction, talked about the public records. You know, all the, all the sort of whys and don'ts of committees, didn't talk about grant applications. And um, our admin staff used to routinely send that to everybody who got appointed to a committee. That was so, I don't know if that's happening now, but it was happening. Uh, at some point, said, thank you for serving. Your, you know, here's your regulations and the open meeting laws. You should have a chair. You should have someone take minutes. Here's what you need to do. So that is created somewhere.
Yeah.
Apparently, go ahead.
It is very great to hear this because I've served on different uh committees as a resident. I have never received anything that. And when I mean orientation, I mean like real orientation when you start your job, like uh interactive, not like. Uh, receiving, I don't know, ten pages of a document that just try to read it like. Um, but it is great that we have the resources, so we will just like restructure them. So this is great news.
Well, uh, if if I might, I mean, it it is. I mean, I do think that there's opportunity in this conversation to make sure that we are um. Following through with those sorts of items. But, you know, I think that one of the the pieces here is that, you know, we we do not have. The administrative staff for that anymore. And so the people that are now, we've triaged to kind of retool how we're doing things. You know, there there's there's been a change and so we just need to be clear about what the expectations are so that then we can work that into our process going forward. And kind of streamline that because there there are some changes that, you know, the things that we have done historically, you know, we are um. In compliance with open meeting and making sure that things are published timely. But, you know, it's pretty limited, honestly. Um, and we're gonna do our best. But that's also in part why we want to take a look at the committees and make sure that it's a manageable workload and make sure that we're really clear on expectations. Um, and, you know, I will say that, you know, the the idea of, you know, um. Really addressing for these committees is great, you know, that that's progress. Um, so I I'm really thankful for that. Um, and then I think I am hearing, you know, a few other things that are coming up as part of the conversation. And so I think it's just, you know, how would you like to take up those items? Do you want to take it up? I probably outside of council time. I would imagine.
Ben.
Yeah, I again, I go back to three suggestions of one, we approve the kind of recommendations that you made, Jack, that it was initial list of four. I would say we approve the kind of roles and responsibilities document that Kelly has provided. And then three, I don't know if people went to this, but like I think we should, um, those remaining committees where there's questions. I think uh council members should volunteer to meet with those groups and then report back.
Let's turn that into three motions.
Okay, but I think maybe, do you folks want to go first?
Carrie.
Um, yeah, what was I gonna say? I was gonna talk about the charge. And I, so we have a few committees where we have questions about should they merge, should they not merge, and we need to figure that out more. But all of the committees, I think, really need clarification about their charges. Some of them are probably fine the way they are. But all of them, we have, we should really look at all of them and decide what it is that we as city council want that committee to do. That's a longer process, but um I just want to make sure that that gets in there. And I think we can, the first step to doing that is we can ask the committees. What what they think. Um, so then I'm okay with the the four and the, yeah.
I was pretty much gonna say what Carrie said, but I just want to add one more thing because I think we have to look at the gaps here. So if we go and talk to the committee members that are here, that are active. I think we're missing the committee members that have left and that have might been in the past. And I think it's really important to identify, you know, maybe we can come up with a list of questions or exploratory questions like what went well? What didn't go well? What would you like better in the future? Like, once again, this is their volunteer time. So how can we as the city make sure that we're valuing their their time is valued? They feel like they're contributing to the success of the city. And I I know for a fact that a lot of committee members have just resigned. Because they don't feel any of that. And so I think it's very, very important to understand why and get to the root cause. And not just doing a wide, you know, go to these meetings and see how things are going. I think we need to take. I think we need to do some more investigative work and really try to figure this out because the committees, for me, are the future, right? As we lose funds, as we, you know, might not have enough staff, we're gonna rely on these committees to do a lot of our work. And they have to be really strong. And we want to make sure that they're viable and and sustainable and and feeling a part of our community.
Jim. I'm not gonna take any more public comment, at least.
I'm gonna harp on something that I said before. I think a lot of this falls on us for not having our priorities done early. We had our priorities done early, then we could tell committees what we wanted out of them. And it it all comes, I mean, right now I see, we're kind of like, the committees are spinning their wheels. Like the staff is spinning their wheels because the council hasn't given them direction, any of them. And this is why everybody's floundering. I mean, I feel like this has just been, we haven't got, we spent a lot of time on this already. And I don't really know what we've really accomplished, to be honest with you. Um. I think, you know, I kind of thought we'd come out of this with, okay, some kind of plan, how we're gonna organize this and move it ahead. Not just, you know, I thought it was gonna be very quick to the consolidation or the elimination and okay. Not leave it there because if we leave it there, then why are we even doing this? Um, the next step is to, okay, what committees do we want to keep? Who's gonna be the one that's going to be the representative so we know what's going on? And what do we want them to do? And maybe we ought to have that meeting we're gonna have about our priorities before we decide it. Because I really don't know what, what are we gonna tell committees? I mean, we can't just listen to them and say, well, this is what we were working on, what we want to do. It may not be anything we want them to do. We're the ones that need, we're the leaders. We need to act like leaders and tell them how, what we need out of them. They, I think, will respond. When I ran committees, people responded that. And I went in there and said, okay, here's what we need to be doing. Here's what we're gonna be looking at. And people responded because there was a leader in there saying, all right, this is the path we're going down. We're not providing that, I don't think. And we need to be. So this is something that we haven't done right from the beginning. So let's have that meeting, get our priorities and goals down so we can start working on these other loops out. But that's just me.
Thanks, Jim. Ben.
I I'd like to make a motion that we accept the four commit, the recommendations around the four committees that Jack mentioned. The elimination or consolidation of those committees. Jack, would you mind reading them again?
Investment Committee, Stormwater Utility Committee, Community Advisory Board. And the Social and Economic Economic Justice Advisory Committee. So Bill, you're seconding it, Jim? Ready to vote on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, good.
Can I make another motion?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion. I'm gonna go with the one that I think is probably is good, that we approve um the roles and responsibilities document. That the committee work, Kelly took form that outlines everybody's roles and responsibilities.
Good.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hey.
Can I make one more motion?
Yes.
And then I'll be done.
Uh, roll, keep going.
Can I make a motion that we um, that uh council members will volunteer? To meet with the other committees that have been um recommended for being put on hold or merged. Such as the Housing or Homelessness Task Force to try to determine a path forward collaboratively with them. And 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 we would report back to the council what we what we learned.
Moved in second to Adrian.
Oh, no.
No, I don't, I don't think that's, I mean, because the homes of the house, the housing committee doesn't even exist.
That, my understanding is there's still, I, if it doesn't exist, then we don't.
Let's, let's have one person speaking at a time, please.
I still think we're missing a very important part of that, and I'm trying to think of how to phrase it. So I I do agree that we should go meet with the committees.
Yeah.
But I think we have to have another layer. Of. Like digging down a little, I'm trying to think.
Can I get like a specific example, like the housing thing, right? If there, I thought there were still existing members. If they're not, okay, we, so what I would suggest is maybe we actually ask the members who have resigned.
Okay.
To come in and be a part of that meeting, that we could have a co, I believe you could have a common meeting with the homelessness task force. The housing committee members who have resigned, if there are still housing committing members, those people, the counselors that were on that committee. Uh, and I think we could have like a common calm conversation about what went well, what didn't go well. And is there a path forward here, either as separate committees or as a merged committee? Like, I think that's the kind of the conversation that needs to happen.
Carrie.
Yeah, I agree with that. Um, not assuming that would be the end of that process, right?
Yes.
Beginning of process.
Yes.
Jim.
Well, we had somebody that's gonna do, talk about the merging. Corey's gonna talk about the merging of those two. So let's leave that to him. Um, I'll say right now, I'll step up and take the Housing and Homeless Task Force. And try to gather them all together in a meeting and say, first of all, do we think we can all get along? And be at committee together and knowing that each group needs to have their own time in the committee. I know how to organize these things. I've been, I can't tell you how many committees I've been the chair of. So I'd like to be the chair of that and bring the two groups together. And see if I can sort that out. So I'm willing to take on that.
I'm gonna suggest that we not get those, do decide on those volunteers tonight. Let's get the process started and then offline people, council members can uh say what they're wanting to volunteer for.
Well, I'm already putting one out there.
Got it, because I think we spent too much time on this already.
Right.
Are you ready? Any, everybody ready to vote on Ben's third motion?
We should put that down.
All those, Carrie.
Can I ask this clerk if you will read that back? I'm not 100% sure.
I have a piece missing that I was gonna ask you about. I think a little funky that uh. Council members will volunteer to meet with the other committees recommended with being put on hold or eliminated. Such as the Housing Task Force and discuss, I got down, but it's not right. It was with them where they want to go next and report back to the council.
Yeah, I I I think I would say discuss a potential path forward.
Is that mostly counseling?
Ben. So Jim, Jim, we're gonna take, we're gonna decide, Ben.
Yeah, and and I think, I think, Jim, what would happen is if we, if we agree that that's the process, then I'm assuming that like offline, we could email. For example, you've already volunteered for this one, volunteer, you know, give your name to Jack. And I don't know, Jack, if this is actually the process, but that you could appoint people to do that.
Yeah, me, Bill and Kelly and.
Yeah, so I mean, I guess what we're do, what we're doing right now is just my motion is that we move forward with that process of counselors stepping up. Like you, to meet with these groups that are in question, see if we can come up with a path forward. It's the beginning of a process, but when we come back to the full council, make a recommendation. Like, for example, you spoke to the homelessness and housing task force and you found a way forward and this is what it is. And then the council can vote to re-energize that committee.
Adrian, then Pellen.
Can we add to that motion a minimum of two counselors per committee?
Sounds like a good idea to me.
Okay, do you mean, I'm sorry, in like on all the committees or for this process?
This motion.
Yeah, I love that.
Pellen.
So what happened to the additional study? Is this the additional study you just asked? So this is the additional study?
Motion is.
Okay, and the second one, are we signing up for committees? Because the ones that I used to serve, couple of them reached out to me and I said, we are still waiting. So what should I tell them? When are we doing that?
For one thing, we are not gonna do that tonight, but I think you should tell those committees that you're still on them. All right, are we ready to vote on Ben's motion? If so, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. Folks, it's time for our eight-thirty break.
Thank you.
It's nine-twelve. Come back at nine-twenty-two. Come back at nine twenty-two. It is nine twenty-three. I think Pellen's on her way back in the room now. So we'll move to. Item nine, the not long-term control plan update. Kurt.
Yep. Uh, Kermata Public Works Director. So just a a quick background on what this item is all about um. So the city has uh in our sewer collection system um. What's called combined sewer overflow structures. So those are essentially um underground manholes that have um a wear wall built into them. And when heavy rains uh overwhelm, they exceed the capacity of the sewer pipes. Um, that combined uh rainwater and sewer uh goes to the river. And uh the city in two thousand nineteen, Public Works developed uh what's called a long-term control plan. So that's our plan to. Um reduce or eliminate sewer combined sewer overflows. And from that plan, uh the state then developed a permit condition called the twelve seventy-two order. Um which essentially outlines deadlines for project completion, separation projects to take the storm water out of the sewer. Um to accomplish um. The goal of reducing or eliminating uh combined sewer overflows. Uh, so. The meeting tonight is a requirement of our permit to have council adopt a a new schedule for some of the projects outlined in that long-term control plan. Um in order for them to officially amend our twelve seventy-two order, we have to have um approval from the city council to amend. Uh the the project completion dates. So uh some of the delays, um uh we do have some delays on some of these projects that was uh related to first COVID and then um the two. Blood events, which uh you know occupied public works engineering staff for a bit. And uh also we had some expansion to some of our planned projects. Um primarily um the state street sewer drainage project that we completed last year. Um that initially started as just sewer replacement where we had a a bad sewer main. Uh and it was expanded to really separate a a lot of C S O that we discovered or a lot of combined storm water that we discovered during final design. Um so a much bigger project went from, you know, a few hundred thousand dollars to close to a million dollars. And then the East State Street C S O project, uh we didn't realize the level of storm water treatment that was gonna be required. Uh as part of that, that's the project that's currently being built on um on State Street. Uh so we had to expand that scope to include um pretty significant storm water treatment as part of a part of the work. So that added costs, but also design time uh for engineering staff. So that's sort of the background of why we need to amend some of these schedules. Um and then just briefly, I wanted to just highlight what we are proposing um for changes and um. Uh and the schedule associated with them. Um, so uh. My first item, I I provided the memo to council, but I'll just go through it quickly. There have a couple of minor revisions to this of what I wrote. Um I discovered uh after I sent this initially. Um so for official approval, I'd like to um use what I the what I described here. Um. Momentarily. So uh the first item was um delay of the slip line. So um there are two uh siphon lines. That um cross the rivers, one under the North Branch, one under the Winuski River. So siphon is um basically uh the pressure of the wa- the liquids in this case sewer um is higher on. On one side, on this uh uphill side or uh the collection side. Uh and then it's a little bit lower on the side from uh where the plant is and um that pressure pushes. In this case, underneath the river and then back out to the other side, so it can cross the river without pumps. Um, so these were constructed in nineteen sixty-two. That's when the treatment plant was built. That's when um. All of the sewer mains were essentially built. They used to all go to the river until sixty-two. And um. So they're they're old, uh they've been around a long time. They haven't been replaced since they were constructed initially. And so the concept is uh to line them, slip line them with uh like an epoxy cured liner. And um one that will add capacity because the friction will be less, so um you can get more liquids through. Um should note that the plant has a lot of capacity. It's the piping system that does it. So if we can just get. Um the sewer storm water to the plant, we can treat it, which is uh which is ideal. Um, so anywhere we can in- increase capacity uh is a good thing for reducing uh combined sewer overflows. Um but the second benefit is that um we're also preserving that asset, so it extends the life. At the same time, we're increasing capacity. We're getting more longevity out of um. Out of the pipe, because these liners are actually structural. That can um, you know, take load. Um, so uh. That project um is actually a a minor error on um. On the delay of this one. This is a new project that's not in our twelve seventy-two order. And um that liner is proposed to be constructed um in December of two thousand twenty-six. So uh next year. Uh, the second item is expansion of the uh State Street Sewer Project. So it's just a note that we um actually did more than what was in our permit. We separated out the storm water. It wasn't originally just a sewer project and it ended up being both a sewer project and. Um a separation of storm water out of the sewer. Um, the third item is expansion of the East State Street project that I mentioned. Um so uh again, um. Just turn it into a bigger project through storm water treatment. And the fourth item is actually um a change. That was an existing project that um. Uh was delayed. And that is uh as I described before, um a siphon line. In this case, it goes under the north branch of the river instead of the Winuski. And uh again, the same process that we're proposing to line it, extend the asset life as well as increase capacity. And that project, we would do those two liners together, um plan both to be done by the end of next year. And one other item that I uh need to add here that is on the twelve seventy-two is hydraulic analysis. So that's um. Looking at the capacity of the collection, the sewer collection system as a whole. Um so an engineering study to really look at uh a deeper dive of where um the restrictions are within the collection system. Um, and. That one, we really push back because uh we're doing such these really major projects that East State Street project. And um the State Street Sewer and Drainage Project both really changed the hydraulics and systems. We're taking so much storm water out. Um that it didn't make sense uh as our permit read to do the analysis before we completed those projects that really changed things. Um, so that one I'm proposing to be completed in December of twenty twenty-seven after the southern work is done. Um so really what I'm looking for is for a motion for council to approve. Um, the schedule associated with our long-term control plan as um as I just described.
There's a motion. Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying I. Any opposed? Thanks, Kurt. That brings us to. Item number ten. Formation of an ad hoc committee on sanctuary policy and ICE activity response. We've got that scheduled for five minutes because I think it may not require uh. Creation of a committee, but uh. But Counselor Cone, this is at at your request, I believe.
It ma- it is my proposal, so um I want um. Council considers to have a city council. Ad hoc committee uh to review our policies, and I believe that we have everything we need. Uh and it is important because um individually I was approached with different committee members and also I know that city council. Also was approached um and explaining um those people explain their um. Concerns about uh all the things are happening right now. So I just wanna make sure that. Uh Montpelier um residents uh will uh Montpelier residents have all the information they need. Uh what uh the city um has as a policy. And also uh what we can do and what we cannot do. So uh this committee can provide some information uh by reviewing our policies and also. Um even talking to other towns uh which are sanctuary cities like us Burlington, Winuski, I think. Um and then just like uh create uh maybe. Um, I don't know, um a presentation here or a public meeting and explain what uh. We have found. So I know that um. Uh Counselor uh Brown uh has expressed uh her interest in uh serving on this committee, so very happy. And if other counselors uh wanna um serve on this committee, it will be great. We can work with this staff. And see what we are. And where we are at.
Thanks. Thank you, Pella. I. The question I have. Is. Whether we need this committee as opposed to just maybe. Have someone put together, you know, we have. A fair and impartial policing policy that we adopted years ago that was the product of a lot of work of the police. Review commission and uh. It, I think it does what it we needed to do, which specifically says. Our police are not here to enforce federal immigration law. And um. So I wonder if. All we really need to do is do uh. Some kind of publication, send out the policy to the public along with. A s- a summary. Rather than ask people to spend more time on a committee. That's my immediate reaction.
Yeah, it will be a city council ad hoc committee, so no, no um residents will be on the committee. Just the city counselors who think that they have time. But it's, again, it's the council decision uh to consider or not.
Fair.
Yeah, the way I'm envisioning this is not so much like a regular committee, like the whole list we just went through, but um. And an opportunity to. Bring public awareness, because I've gotten the same questions to you, like, well, what is, what does that mean? What's sanctuary city? What's happening with the fair and impartial policing policy? People have asked me that. Well, it's. It's there, but yeah, uh but what does that mean? People have more questions about it and so um. You, I I would love it if we had some mechanism for a kind of a non-official committee that was just a couple of us that, hey, we'll work on this and. Come up with something, uh but. In the absence of that, I think maybe, you know, we need to say we're gonna form an ad hoc. That will be working on public education.
And I understand. So I checked with Bill and Kelly. Uh, not this one, but the other. I think it was uh about economic development. What can we call like unofficial? And apparently whatever. We call the group, it is still uh requires all the public thing. So that's why I thought ad hoc. Committee will be the best because it shows that it is temporary. It's not like a really, as you were saying, like a huge comedy regulations and rules. Yeah, but I I wish we could have called it like not comedy. Yeah, but I I wish we could have called it like not comedy, something else, but uh apparently it doesn't matter what we call it. Thanks.
Dan, are you starting to say something?
I was trying to say something, but I, well, I just want to, yes. I really appreciate you bringing this forward and your concern about it. I think it's like watching the news this week has been extremely challenging. Um and I think, you know, the the motive here is really good to keep our neighbors safe, right? Like, I think that that's what this is about. When I read the description of the purpose of the committee, I did get nervous about potential unintended consequences of um you know, we do have uh what I, I mean, I'm not an attorney, but I read the, you know, fair and impartial policing policy and it seems very clear. And so I think, are there ways in which we can share that information to make sure everybody in the community understands that policy? I think that would be a great goal. I worry about things like a large public meeting where we get input on that or talk about that or expect the people that who might be actually impacted by that would show up. You know, I I think um and I and Palin, to your point about like, does this have to be a committee in the city council or is this something like individual citizens can take responsibility to share with their neighbors who might be impacted about this? The the, you know, our policy and to say, hey, we have a policy as a city, we, you know, we we got your back. And you know, the other, I just, I think like, there's two goals in my mind. One is to keep our neighbors safe and then the other is to like stand up against what is illegal trip towards totalitarianism. Right? But I also think there's a protest on Saturday that we can go to.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I can I?
Yeah.
Again, I am okay with whatever council decides. Uh I wanna bring up this proposal because there's a quite a bit um request from me, maybe because I was an immigrant American. I don't know. Maybe people think that I will understand their concerns more when they reach out to me. So I know you remember we had a citizen came here, give a presentation and trying to reach us individually to uh reach out us um as a council. Uh that's why and also not only one a person, but so many inputs I received. That's why I thought it is good to discuss, but whatever we decide, even is there like a publication or just show that we already have this policy. It is enough. We will not do anything. Everybody is safe. Or uh come up with another way. Uh and uh I know I understand your point, Ben, but when you say that all these news are really scary, for some people it is their reality. It is not only news, scary news. They live in this fear. But again, anything we decide, it is okay with me. I felt responsible uh to discuss this as a council issue and whatever we decide, I am sure that uh it will really help every single community member in Montpelier uh will understand that we are trying to uh do something uh to protect them and we are supporting them and they don't have to live in fear. Uh but it's up to you. So this is my proposal. Whatever we decide, it is good uh to me because I know that we already have everything we need uh to create inclusive and supportive um Montpelier. Thank you.
So.
Well, I um I wondered too if we needed a committee or some committee, but um I mean, I I think it sends a signal to the community that we're concerned about these issues that we want to emphasize the policy. We want to review it, make sure it does what we think it does. And I assume that what would come out of it would be some way to um to to publicize it a little better than than we have in past. So I, you know, I I I like the idea. I I I you know, uh an ad hoc committee has, you're right, it's time limited. Um so I I think and it has a very uh clear mission and end result uh mind. I I think um I think it makes it makes good sense in this environment um to send that message to the community.
Is that a motion? Where does someone, do you want to make a motion?
Um, okay, so I um I make a motion to have a ad hoc city council committee uh to work with city staff and review our uh policies uh to create a more inclusive um Montpelier. Is it enough or I should be more specific?
Is is there a second?
I'll I'll second um to create a more a more inclusive.
I don't know. I I because Ben, that the purpose is a little bit concerning. So I don't wanna say that specific thing. So I don't know if it is enough or I should say that.
Palin, what about the idea? What if it was amended the motion to say, form an ad hoc committee to review the part, the impartial policing policy and to work with staff to find ways to disseminate it to the community more broadly? I think my concern is the idea of anything that, which I know you share, of what bringing people together that creates a target, right? Like, I think we want to share resources with people in our community and you know, that they know we have this policy. And I don't know, does everybody know we have this policy? So I guess I would say like, could we amend the motion to say?
Yeah.
Uh uh an ad hoc uh time-limited ad hoc committee to review the part, the impartial policing policy and work with city staff to disseminate it widely in the community.
Yeah, and the the aim is not to bring people who are like vulnerable. So yeah, that's not the aim. Yeah, so it is. It is okay.
By by universe, by uh consent, can we uh replace Ben's language in in the motion?
Man?
Yeah.
It sounds good to me.
I I'm not seeing anyone objecting. Um Deborah. You're not muted yet, so.
Mute. Okay.
Yes.
Yes, I strongly support this idea and thank you, um councillor Palin, for um bringing this up. Um one of the things that I think is really important to realize is that uh we have um declared ourselves a sanctuary city back in twenty sixteen. And um for some reason, which I'm not too clear on, this was amended in twenty seventeen. And at the, I've done a little research on that and found that uh uh this was considered softening our stance, that Montpelier softened the stance uh from the original version in order to um comply with um the feds. And then this was criticized actually by some. There was some dissent. And that's the kind of thing that I would um like to learn more about. Um but also um right now sanctuary cities are really in the crosshairs of um the Trump administration. Um there's been all kinds of rhetoric about um about protecting criminal aliens and all kinds of lies and deceit uh around this. So um even to the point um where some members of his administration are saying that uh the um that they're going to be sending in National Guard specific if there's protests in sanctuary cities. So there's really, we are really um a target. And I think this brings a lot of fear to our community. So and it it's not just the police policy, but it's um also the um the whole sanctuary city designation. Uh so um I really support the idea of a community forum where people could come and express their concerns and then hear um hear from the city explanations about these different designations and what the city can do. Um for instance, if there is uh an ICE raid and then people are detained without due process of law. Uh and also um to share with other sanctuary cities in Vermont. And maybe get on the same page and be able to create a uh a unified response to some of the um things that are happening from the feds. So thank you.
Any further discussion of the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, um so is the committee gonna be Palin and Carrie? All right, there we are. Thanks. We're next up to item eleven, community recognition award. Again, councillor Cohn.
I just create a proposal for an ad hoc committee, but now um I wanna change it because I talked to Kelly and Kelly shared with me uh there is a similar um award uh at city. So now I'm thinking if it is not too late to change, is it okay uh if city council authorize me to work with Kelly to revise that award and just like because we we are already having it and make it um align with my proposal and bring back to uh the uh council. But of course, if anyone wants to serve on that um group, I'm happy.
Oh, I don't think we need to authorize you to do anything. You you go work with Kelly and come back to us.
Okay, so uh then there's no action needed. Good. Thank you. Okay, so Kelly, you have me again.
Next up, we have the application to uh reappoint uh someone to the development review board. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving right along. Um executive session, I think we're probably expecting to come back and take action after that executive session with regard to at least one, possibly more of those. So should we do, we can, we can do the follow the, everything that's after the executive session now. The city council reports. Starting with Ben.
Uh I just want to uh acknowledge the work of the planning commission that did some great work this week on uh same turn zoning changes that makes our city more housing friendly. And uh I think the next step is for those suggestions to come our way. And I just want to say I'm looking forward to seeing.
No report. Thank you.
Jim.
Let's catch you up on the um committee I'm on that isn't actually under the city that's with the um businesses and we are going to be uh speaking with um the the chief, not this Thursday, but next Thursday, he's gonna come in. We have a list of questions for him that we're gonna ask. Um we put out a survey and it's got like thirty-eight responses from businesses on a lot of questions and we're also going to be discussing uh Friday about the next partners we want to talk to. We're trying to gather as many partners and hear from them as possible so we can decide on some kind of uh plan moving forward.
Thanks, Jim. So. Carrie.
No.
Adrian.
Um all to say that uh Palin and I co-hosted our first childcare task for me, task force meeting on Monday. And um I think it went really well. We had um a couple of participants that who were unable to attend, but we are working on setting a regular cadence, having their roles and responsibilities assigned for that committee and bringing in some experts to kind of kickstart some of that momentum for that task force. So um that's all I have.
Cool. Um mayor's report, I have a couple of things to say. One is uh I I really want to recognize and honor the work of the the GRIT, the graffiti removal infrastructure team. We've been getting regular emails from uh from Nancy Schultz from that committee uh showing us pictures of of the things they've done to um to abate uh graffiti around the town. And I and I just hate the graffiti. I it it makes the place look terrible and I I really am grateful for the people on the on the team that are that are doing that work. Um and second, uh we just got the message today that or tonight that uh that the governor vetoed H ninety-one uh in act relating to the Vermont homeless emergency assistance program. And uh what he says, I think is quite striking. He's wanted to eliminate the hotel program for some time. And he says, rather than continuing to fund a program that isn't good for those in it, I believe we should focus on real solutions like building, you know, shelter capacity and requirements to engage in work, training and treatment for those who need it. That way, those who are experiencing homelessness are more likely to get back on their feet and and into permanently housing, permanent housing. And and my concern, what I've been saying for a long time, we've we've been hearing from the administration for a long time that uh we shouldn't be spending our money on these shelters and the motels. We should be spending it on permanent housing. That's obviously true. However, removing the program before that permanent housing and shelter uh exists is uh is just backwards and it's not going to address the needs that uh people will continue to have next year and uh years after that. City clerks report. Nothing.
Should mention.
Well, go ahead. Do you want to do that? Okay. Or I can do that too. I was gonna, thanks for the reminder. Um we we did get notice um just the other day that former councillor uh Jean Olson died. I didn't know that she uh uh had cancer for a long time, but it's uh it's sad news for her family and for the city. City managers, work. Oh, he he already passed. Okay.
Yeah, I have a few things actually, sorry. And we've been here a while. Um so two things related to the topic we just discussed, and I don't want to belabor this, but I will say about the fair and impartial policing policy. While someone could say it was softening, I think the the original sanctuary city policy said that we would have zero contact with ICE under these circumstances. And what we amended that to do is there are times when we are dealing with someone who is a victim. Uh was a, you know, someone who's been trafficked or something and we need to talk with ICE to get them you know, immigration officials to get them back to their home. So so it was to really provide the police and it's very clear that we will not involve immigration policy. It was also, again, after the first Trump administration, the state uh the state adopted a statewide policy on this. And and so all communities follow that same policy. That is the standard that we have. So I just want to be clear about that. So we do not assist. You know, if federal agents come into our community, they can. I mean, I don't mean to be sanguine. We're, we can't stop them from doing that. We do not call them. We do not report, you know. We pull someone over for driver's events. We don't ask them about their immigration status. We don't do any of that. And uh if we have someone at the police station, we don't call them up and say, hey, we've got, you know, so-and-so here. Uh and that has been our practice. We've never had an immigration issue here in the city. Uh so I just wanted to clarify that. Uh to that end though, I also wanted to, a couple of people, or at least one person, mentioned that there was a an event on Saturday, a protest on Saturday. And I know there's a nationwide protest about um you know, no kings. But I thought people should also know that there's a group that has reserved the use of the State House lawn on Saturday. And their purpose is to um and they sent a notice to our police department to make sure that they knew about that, that that this was happening at eleven AM. And they are recognizing the American flag because it is Flag Day. And they are recognizing President Trump's birthday and the two hundred and fiftieth birth of the US Army. And they have approval for the use of the State House uh lawn for their event. And they give their names or anything like that. So um just people aware. And it doesn't appear that the other group has the reserve reservation in the State House lawn. So um just could be an interesting day. Um so just point that out. Let's see, I don't, one thing I wanted to say, just wanted to correct something from the weekly memo. We we've actually corrected it in the memo, but I want to say it publicly. Uh I said in in the weekly memo, I gave a summary on collective bargaining and I know you can hear the details. But I made reference to the fact there had been three meetings with the fire union. There actually have been seven. And so that was my error. I had checked with Kelly on that. They'd sent us their notice of impasse and it said after three nonproductive meetings and then at the last three. So I I just want to apologize to them for uh any misstatement. It was unintentional. We've been setting up a series of meetings with like National Life, Mont Mutual. Building his ground services, so I can kind of officially introduce Kelly to them. Uh so that's happening over the next week or two. See, uh you'll be talking about this in executive session. There's a mediation on Tuesday and asked to authorize. Need to take action on behalf of the city or perhaps non-action. Uh but I will be attending that. Uh we figured that if somebody had to spend all day. In a court mediation, that's will be the guy heading out the door, not the one who's actually doing stuff. So I I took that one. Um we had a meeting and I can't get into a lot of detail, but I just wanted, you know, on encouraging news, we had a meeting with um. Parties that are very interested in housing that country club road. Um and have the wherewithal to make it happen. Uh and they're very, so we met, uh Secretary Curly from the state was with us. Um these are people that are major players. Uh I'm not, I'm not at liberty to say because they are not sure where they're going. If they want to learn more about the project and how they could participate. Uh it was very encouraging. So that was exciting. So I think that's that.
Okay, we have a number of matters. Thanks, Bill. We have a number of matters to take up in. Executive session and so at this point, I would entertain a motion that the council find that. Premature uh premature general public knowledge would clearly place the public body. At a substantial disadvantage regarding contracts, uh labor relations and pending civil litigation. Is there a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye. And the opposed? Then I would entertain a motion to go into executive session. Is there a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye. And the uh we would invite the city manager and assistant city manager to come into the. Okay, and from there, I expect we'll be. Coming back because at least one of these will require us to take action, which we cannot do in executive session. So I suggest we just go next door to the to the room next door to do that.
Okay folks, we're back. Chair would entertain a motion to come out of executive session. Is there a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the chair would entertain a motion. Relating to the federal litigation.
Delegates on William Fraser's authority to discuss the management of Biden settlement on behalf of the senior non-fiduciary at an early ETO violation held on June 17, 2025 in the matter of fraud and abuse of the senior non-fiduciary thousand number two, three, four, three, five, nine, nine.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Our business for tonight being concluded. We are adjourned at 11:19 PM.